Hello, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Paso Robles City Council for Tuesday, March the 2nd. Before we open the meeting, I'd like to make the following announcement, please. In compliance with the state and county shelter home orders and as allowed by the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, which allows for a deviation of teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act, city council members will be held by teleconference only until further notice. Rather than attending in person, residents should call 805-865-7276 to provide public comment via phone. The phone line will open just prior to the start of the closed session meeting and again prior to the start of the regular meeting. Written public comments can be submitted via email to cityclerk@prcity.com prior to 12 noon on the day of the council meeting to be posted as an addendum to the agenda. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item by number or name. City council meetings will be live streamed during the meeting and also available to play later on YouTube by accessing the following link: www.prcity.com/youtube. And with that, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please mute your microphones with the exception of Councilwoman Garcia, who I will ask to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, sir, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May we have our invocation at night by Pastor Christopher Cole. Pastor Cole, are you with us?
I am. Let us pray. Heavenly Father God, we are grateful that you are a present God who not only hears our prayers, but who acts in time and space to respond to our prayers. We're thankful that you're a gracious God who delights to do good to and bless people. We're humbled when we realize that you're a holy God and that you want justice, equity, kindness, and mercy in our society even more than we often do. We ask that you bless tonight's meeting with your presence, your grace, and your holy character, that all who participate might seek to do good to their neighbors as individuals and as a community. We ask that you grant everyone here a spirit of humility that seeks to listen more than to speak, to care as much about the benefit of others as ourselves, and to lift up the weak and disadvantaged. Where there is disagreement, may we see opportunities for mutual understanding, respect, and cooperative solutions. We ask that you grant our mayor, council members, city staff, and other civic leaders true wisdom, strength, confidence, and joy as they seek to serve the people of our city. We are thankful for their hours of service and efforts on our behalf. We thank you for our emergency services personnel, police officers, and firefighters who protect our city and ask that you protect them as they go about their appointed duties. We are thankful for today's announcement that our county will be able to enter a lower tier of response to the COVID-19 pandemic. We're grateful that many of our businesses will be able to resume a more normal course of serving our community. We ask that you give us, the residents of our city, both wisdom and humility to know how to continue to protect each other even as we enjoy more freedoms in social and economic interactions. We pray for an end to this pandemic, and we are grateful for the vaccines that are being distributed to combat this disease. We ask that you protect and financially restore those businesses who've experienced so many challenges during this time of trial. In all things, we surrender our will to yours, trusting that your providential hand and purpose is always good. Finally, we thank you for the gift of your Son, Jesus Christ, the God man-made flesh who is the answer to every heart's longing. May we find our joy and peace in him. It is in his name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Now I would ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Gregory?
Here.
Councilmember Hammond?
Here.
Councilmember Strong?
Here.
Mayor Martin?
I'm present. Staff their deductions, please.
Warren Frase, Community Development Director. With me tonight is Darren Nasher, City Planner, and Darcy Delgado, our Associate Planner.
Christopher Lackel, Department of Public Works Director, joined by Deidre Esperanza, Capital Projects Engineer, Dave Licaro, Stormwater Manager, and Matt Thompson, Waste Water Resources Manager.
Julie Dolan, Community Services Director.
Ty Lewis, Chief of Police.
Jonathan Stornetta, Fire Chief, joined by Randy Harris, Fire Marshal Battalion Chief.
Ryan Cornell, Admin Services Director.
Sarah Johnson-Rios, Assistant City Manager, joined by Melissa Martin, City Clerk, Dave McHugh, IT Manager, Shauna Howenstein, Civic Engagement Coordinator, and Paul Sloan, Economic Development Manager.
Kimberly Hood, Intern City Attorney.
Tom Fruchy, City Manager.
Thank you. Prior to this open meeting, we had a notice, a closed session meeting of the Paso Robles City Council. I'll ask the City Attorney now if there was any reportable action from that.
The council convened in closed session on two items. The first was the public employment position concerning the city manager and intern city manager. The council is continuing the recruitment search for the city manager position and expects to utilize services of an intern city manager while that recruitment continues. With respect to the second item, the conference with real property negotiators, the council provided direction. There is no reportable action.
Thank you very much. I know that we have someone waiting who would like to make a comment on closed session. Closed session comments are taken prior to the actual closed session. The phone lines were open this evening. However, I'm going to allow that person during general public comment to ask a question, and that will probably be referred to the City Attorney since these are closed session items. We move forward now with our presentations for this evening. First off, we have our COVID-19 community update.
Good evening, Mayor Martin, members of the council. I'm Italian Chief Randy Harris with Assistant City Manager Sarah Johnson-Rios, here tonight to present you with the latest COVID-19 update. Next slide, please. Statewide ICU availability over the past four weeks has increased to 25.2%. The state now has over 3.4 million positive cases and 52,497 fatalities, which is an increase of 5,390 fatalities since your last report on February 16th. Next slide, please. The news we've all been waiting for, San Luis County is now Tier 2, which is the red tier, with an adjusted case rate of 6.8, positivity rating of 2.7%, and health equity rate of 3.4%. Next slide, please. I'm going to read for our listening audience what's allowed in the red tier. Retail, you have a max of 50% capacity. Movie theaters have a max of 25% capacity or 100 people, whichever is less. Family entertainment centers, outdoor only with modifications. Playgrounds, outdoor only with modifications. Hair salons and barber shops, indoors with modifications. Places of worship, max 25% capacity. Hotels and lodging are open with modifications. Restaurants are max 25% capacity or 100 people, whichever is less. Wineries and tasting rooms are open outdoors only with modifications. Gyms and fitness centers are indoors with modifications. And bars, breweries, and distilleries still remain closed. Parents in the Paso Robles School District today were notified that students in grades 7 through 12 will be returning to campuses for hybrid in-person school between March 9th and 16th. Next slide, please. As of this afternoon, San Luis Obispo County has had 19,724 total cases, including 236 fatalities with 504 active cases. This is a continuation of the significant downward trend we've seen since February. Currently, San Luis Obispo County has 14 COVID-19 patients in the hospital, and only one of those are in the intensive care unit. The Paso Robles region has averaged 7.13 new cases per day over the past two weeks. Next slide, please. San Luis Obispo County Public Health has administered just over 46,000 vaccine doses, with private healthcare providers administering an additional 28,000. San Luis Obispo County remains in Phase 1B, which allows appointments for medical personnel and those 65 and older. The vaccine appointment registry and lottery system is now live for all eligible community members, including Slow County residents aged 65 or older and healthcare workers in Phase 1A. Additionally, education and childcare workers will get vaccinated through their employers. Eligible individuals can register online at recoverslow.org/vaccines or by calling 805-543-2444. This new appointment system provides a fair and easy way for eligible members to get the first dose appointment for COVID-19 in San Luis County. With the new system, there's no need to rush to book an appointment online each week. You'll sign up once, then be alerted when an appointment is ready for you. Now I'll turn it over to Ms. Johnson-Rios for the balance of the report.
Thank you, Chief Harris. So we're all excited that we are able to move into the red tier in the county. And in addition to that, meaning more businesses are able to open or operate more normally, our library and recreation departments are also able to bring back incrementally some more services. Next slide, please. So the library is now able to be open at 50% capacity, and they're continuing to offer grab-and-go services. Patrons can come into the library for 20 minutes at a time and use the computer and browse, et cetera. And then they are also continuing all of the great virtual programming that they've started during the pandemic. As a reminder, there is also Wi-Fi outside the building. Next slide, please. And then the recreation arena, fitness and recreation classes can move back indoors at 10% of the room capacity. So residents can look forward to getting back indoors at Centennial Park soon. And in addition, there are some youth sports that are able to start as of this week. So our recreation staff is in the process of implementing all of these changes and getting more services available to the community. Next slide, please. Just a reminder, we've had some questions about events. Unfortunately, according to the state's blueprint for a safer economy, events will not be allowed until we are out of the tier system entirely. So the guidance right now, as a reminder, is to limit gatherings to three households or fewer when possible. Next slide, please. And just a reminder, these business assistance programs are still ongoing. The current parklets are funded through June, and council will be discussing options for what to do after June at the next council meeting on March 16th. The propane support program, which the chamber is administering on behalf of the city, is still underway through the end of March. We currently have 16 businesses participating in that and receiving some cost assistance for propane. And our Keep It Local gift card promotion is still open. Just a reminder to the public, that means you can go to any of the 78 businesses participating. There is a list on the city's website at prcity.com, and you can purchase a gift card at 20% off right then and there. You don't need to save your receipts and spend a certain amount and submit it to the city or anything like that. You actually just get a discounted gift card at the time of purchase. Next slide, please. And a reminder again of all of the ways that residents can sign up for communications and updates about what's going on with COVID. You'll notice on your agenda tonight, there is an item regarding taking advantage of Questa College funding for, one, potentially two interns largely to be used to help with multilingual outreach for COVID-19 and other city outreach items. Next slide, please. And then just a reminder, one of the metrics that the state is looking at for moving tiers is still related to the number of tests that are completed. So that was a factor in us moving to the red tier. So a reminder that these no-cost testing services are available, and you don't need to be symptomatic or anything to be tested. Next slide, please. That actually concludes our presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you. This is a presentation item. There's no council action required. That being said, let's go to the council. Questions on this, starting with Councilman Hammond.
No questions, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Strong.
No questions.
Ms. Garcia.
No questions, sir, thank you.
And Mr. Gregory.
No questions, thank you, sir.
Thank you. No questions from me. I see no one waiting in queue on this particular item. So we'll move on to our next presentation, which is the Travel Paso Annual Report. Do we have a presentation?
Mayor Martin, it appears that Stacy Jacob, the presenter, is not presently in the meeting.
Okay, then let's cycle on. We can come back if she signs in. Can we go to the next item? Is Joel Peterson with us?
I am. And I want to let you know that Stacy is on the meeting. She just texted. We're texting back and forth. I don't know if you guys need to let her in, Melissa?
Perhaps.
Do you see her? Otherwise, I'm happy to go, but I know Stacy is in the waiting room, I think.
Let's let them work on the tech aspect, Joel. Why don't you go ahead with the Paso Robles Wine Country Alliance presentation, then we'll cycle back to Travel Paso.
Okay, sure. Great. I will, I will look right here, and... Are you seeing my... Are you seeing the opening slide there?
Yes, we are.
Okay, great. Sorry, I need to see it there. There we go. So thanks so much for letting me speak tonight. And I'm Joel Peterson. I'm with the Paso Robles Wine Country Alliance. I'm the executive director. Been with the organization about two years, and I'm excited to speak with you guys about our contract we have with the city, the partnership, what we've been able to accomplish the last year, and what this year, next year could look like. So on the second slide, we have our mission statement. The Paso Robles Wine Country Alliance has dedicated the promotion and protection of Paso Robles Wine Country and the continuous improvement of the quality of its wines, experiences, and vineyards. We are a membership organization. We are comprised of about 460 members. The backbone of our organization is wineries, about 162 of those. Remainers with growers, associates, and hospitality members, all equally important. But the wineries are our backbone, and they are kind of what make up our livelihood of what we do and why we do it. So on to slide four. Are you guys seeing this? I just want to make sure that you guys are seeing.
We are.
Okay, great. So partnerships. A huge part of what we do are these partnerships. And it's super exciting to have partners with, like, the Paso Robles Chamber of Commerce, Travel Paso, the City of Paso Robles, Wine Institute, Business Local, and Main Street. These are the six we've probably worked the most closely with, but there are lots that we do work with. We work collaboratively with them in promoting things, in raising awareness for things, for marketing the region, for, you know, events like the Paso Robles Wine Festival, Infandel Festival. And this last year during COVID-19, we were able to come together for the downtown dining program in the downtown park, which was accomplished with the Chamber of Commerce and Travel Paso. Raised a lot of money to really support the Downtown Restaurant Association. Downtown restaurants really during a tough time for them. So those partnerships really mean a lot to us, and we look forward to continuing those. Slide five for us. We have a 30-year history here in Paso Robles. And as you guys know, a lot of what we do, we used to be events, and certainly we won't have a lot of events this year, but those will come back at some point in time. In March, we have our vintage Paso's Infandel Weekend. In May, we have our Paso Robles Wine Festival. In October, we have our Harvest Wine Weekend. We have a strong history of working with qualified wine trade. And that's not only wine trade, but sometimes travel and lifestyle as well. We host a buyer's tour, which we call Paso Wine School, you know, every fall, which brings anywhere from 20 to 30 national buyers out here to try the wines in Paso Robles and understand what's going on out here. The picture on the right is a picture of a bunch of buyers standing out there with winemakers talking about the soils here in Paso Robles. We do road shows where we take our wines on the road. We go to LA, San Diego, San Francisco, and Orange County to really showcase the wines down to the markets. We have a strong history of working with media. We bring in national writers for media tours. We do dedicated wine pitches to state and national writers to talk about the great attributes of our wines. And then we also do consolidated critical tastings, where we bring in hundreds of local wines in Paso Robles where then people can come in, that the critics try those wines and score them, and then get them published. And then last but not least, we have a strong history of educating our local industry with best practices in terms of hospitality, marketing, vineyard techniques, wine-making techniques, things like that. So that's really what we do. It's a strong history. Going on to page six, slide six, excuse me. But last and not least, we're marketers. We market the region, and we have for a long, long time. And even though 2020 was a difficult year, we were still able to reach a fair amount of people. We, like the rest of the world, had to pivot, but we did kind of take, go dark from March, April, May into June. And then we did go back into advertising the second half of the year when we kind of got out of that first, you know, that first lockdown. Really impressive numbers with this partnership we have with you guys, you know, in terms of reaching people with our digital advertising, our impressions, our SEM search. The fourth bullet down there, the SEO is pretty impressive. That means we were up 13% last year on organic search, which maybe didn't pay for that, which people were, if they couldn't come to Paso Robles, they were searching for us and organically finding us on the website. We wrote 44 blogs last year, featured 305 of our members. We reached over 225,000 on Facebook. And then we also launched a brand-new podcast, which we're super excited about. The podcast launched, at least every two weeks. We've actually, at this point, got over 10,000 downloads to that.
Great, I'm in now.
Cool. Okay, so slide seven is, just again, your interview. The website really was a powerful tool for us last year. During COVID-19, people couldn't come to Paso Robles for, you know, a good three or four months, but they found us. They were sure, planning their next trip and seeing what we were all about with our sessions. I mean, we had over a million page views last year. We had more views to our website last year than any other year in the history of PasoWine.com, which is impressive. The media still was able to get out there, even though we couldn't have host journalists here in Paso Robles. We sent them wines. We sent them pitches. And then actually, the first week of March, the last thing that we did before the pandemic, we actually did host a press trip that first week of March with five journalists. We met 29 brands, and we poured over 87 wines for them. And on the right is some of the folks, I mean, some of the publications that we got some nice write-ups of last year. Slide eight. It was a pivot year, like most of the world. We had to pivot. And we quickly became an advocacy group for our membership and for the wine community in general in Paso Robles. We sent over 60 dedicated e-blasts about COVID-19. We coordinated letters to Governor Newsom about opening up the wineries or when we could and being safe about that. We led the beverage sector, interacting the Slow County Start Guide, which went away eventually, but we spent quite a bit of time working with county leaders on that. We advocated for the one and three with national, state, and regional leaders. We hosted Zoom updates. One of our Zoom updates had literally 250 attendees in there talking about where we were with those guidelines. Then we worked with Travel Paso to produce two videos about our region being open and safe, and then being safe and responsible when people did feel safe to come to Paso Robles, how to travel here. On to slide nine, the economic impact of our wine industry. We know that the Paso Robles is the majority of the county's economic wine industry, and we're a huge part of it. We know that as of the last report of this, it's a $1.9 billion impact, which is direct, indirect, and induced fees, excuse me, induced costs. We know that Paso Robles makes up 87% of this output, and this economic impact. So Paso Robles alone is over $1.65 billion. And the direct value of that, which is just simply the dollars of what things cost in terms of grapes, wines, you know, bottles of wine, tons per acre, is over $900 million. We know that wine-related tourism is over $100 million industry. That's based on 2015. We know it's probably up at least 20% from there. And another great stat on this is that vineyards and wineries in Slow and Paso Robles AB make up nearly 30% of the property taxes that are collected by Slow County. So we're talking millions of dollars. And then last but not least, we, as an industry, support over 13,000 jobs. And again, this is a number from a few years ago, so we know it's up from that. On to slide 10. We know Paso tourism is driven by wine tourism, and visitation equals tax dollars. So we have a really great partnership with a company called Community Benchmark. With them, we are able to track visitation, direct-to-consumer sales, and wine club sales. Community Benchmark works with over 60 wineries here in the area. I don't ever see their individual information, but I see the conglomerate, the totals of those numbers. We see what we're looking at here. So when COVID-19 hit in March, tourism stopped in all sectors of, you know, tourism here. It was the hotels, the restaurants, downtown shops, everything stopped. And then when wineries did open back up in late May, early June, you can see what happened here. June, I guess, is when it opened up. We went from 600 tasters per tasting room in a month to 900, to over 1,000 in September, October, and November. So we know that wine drives a lot of the experiences here in Paso Robles, and we want to make sure that we're a part of that in the future. And one of the key takeaways for us was that we saw the visitation really rebound in June through November. And then a lot of people were, even though they were down in visitation, their direct-to-consumer sales were actually up because of some of the things in terms of, you know, going by appointment only and staffing correctly, things like that. So tourism really drives, you know, the economy here in Paso Robles. Slide 11, our past contract with the city. We've obviously had a really great relationship with you guys, the city, working on an annual $60,000 contract. The three, the last four years, it's been basically trade outreach, industry education, and wine-specific marketing. Some examples there, what we've been doing in terms of digital, print outreach. And this includes, you know, helping us out with the buyer's tours as well. So really strong partnership there. So 2021, and then slide 12, it's a pretty basic plan. It's a lot of words here, but I'll just go through it really quickly. We're not going to be doing big events this year. We know that because COVID-19 isn't going to allow us to. But we are going to continue to market Paso Robles as an incredible wine destination to visit. And that means we're going to be hitting the drive markets of Southern California, Northern California, and Central Valley to come here and spend time in Paso Robles. Our tactics are digital, organic, radio, email, and social media. Those are the ones that get us the most for paying for a buck when we do spend dollars. Key partnerships with Travel Paso, and key initiatives make our dollars go further. So if we go in and negotiate a radio contract or a digital contract, and we can, you know, kind of partner some of our dollars with Travel Paso on a similar message, we know that we can actually have a lot more efficiency with that. We push our key messages of Paso Robles, which is quality, authenticity, diversity of wines, small-town charm, and experiences. We're going to continue to educate our membership and the community on COVID-19 with testing, vaccinations, and guidelines. We're going to continue advocacy with our key partners like the Chamber of Commerce, the newly envisioned Visitor Center, and Travel Paso as well. And then we're community-minded. We do all kinds of things, the little things that we don't tend to tutor hard too much about. We do street cleanups, blood drives, school supply drives, scholarships. And this year, we're actually hosting our first actual wine country auction, which should raise a lot of dollars, which we can put back into our community. So our overall goal this year is to drive guests back to Paso Robles in a safe manner. In a "Where Wine Takes You" campaign, you've seen the billboard probably on Highway 101. It's the name of our podcast. It's the name of our, a lot of things that we're doing this year, that we know that Paso Robles is where wine takes you in a lot of ways. Last slide, slide 13 to 2121 Contract. So the last but not least, we just know that the ROI on the marketing is massive in our efforts directly bring tax dollars back to the city in terms of sales taxes and bed taxes. We know that $60,000 investment we get every year brings millions of dollars back to the city in tourism. We'd like to continue this partnership and perhaps even increase it to $80,000 or $100,000. We think it's really good money spent. There's very few things that you guys spend money on that actually brings you money back to the city. And I'm happy to talk about that when we do come back with actual contracts, which I think we're going to be doing in the next month, it sounds like, and talking to city administration. So our 2121, excuse me, our 2021 efforts will focus on COVID-19 recovery, which is basically wine marketing, wine region marketing, our wine trade outreach, which is our buyer's tour, and then community and industry education. And we're excited to work with the city again. We know it's been an odd year, a challenging year, but in spite of that, the wine industry has really rebounded well, and we are getting good responses from all of our wineries that they're busy. They're handling the best they can with the different tiers and the different restrictions. But with our move into red, it's good news. We still need to be into orange before we can actually be inside in most wineries. But we'll take it as we can get it and keep fighting the good fight with Paso Robles to continue ourselves as a destination. So, and at that end, I'll take any questions. I just wanted to say thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thanks, Joel. Thanks for that presentation. A lot of information in a very dense format. We do appreciate you getting that in front of us. You know, it's been an interesting year. We... You know, it's been an interesting year. We there in years past, we had this sort of traditional ebb and flow of information, and that's been interrupted as much as many other things during the year of COVID nineteen. So we're kind of getting back on track, seeing where our partner organizations are, trying to get things all lined up to move forward. So thank you for all this work. This, again, is a presentation item, requires no action tonight. We'll start with council comments and Councilman Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joel, you are an integral part of our economy and, again, a great partnership with the city. I'm just curious, where is your membership now? How many wineries? How many associates? What's what's the amount of folks you have on your side helping to fund your organization?
Yeah, great question. So right now, last year's numbers were four hundred and sixty, and that was a hundred and sixty-two wineries, forty-one growers, a hundred and fifty-five associates, and over a hundred hospitality members. We expect to be right on that number this year, if not even gaining a few. We've had a few people who 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 hit some hard times in terms of not being able to re-up. But always when that happens, there's always one or two new people who say, hey, I want to be a a member as well. So we expect to be right about between four hundred and fifty and five hundred members this year, John.
Do you have other industry members also outside the area helping you with being a membership? Or, I guess, associate, I guess you call it, besides the?
Yeah, we actually do. We have a lot of folks who are associate members, have offices kind of all over California. We have some lenders, some banks. We have a lot of people in the financial world who want to who really see the the opportunity in Paso Robles. And they've really come in and helped us, you know, because said, I want to be a member of you guys, and how can I, you know, get in front of your membership? How can I help? So there is a strong amount of people. I would say it's it's massive, but I would say there's probably, if I had to put a number on it, between twenty-five and thirty-five member of our members who have offices in Northern California and maybe the Bay Area, Napa, Sonoma, Sacramento, who who see the the value of of, you know, planting a flag in Paso Robles and helping our industry.
Yeah, very good. All right. Thank you very much, Joel.
Thanks, John.
Councilman Strong.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Joel, I want to thank you for everything you're doing and for the industry. I think some people know that long before I was on the city council, I was the very first wine industry representative on the Ag Advisory Council in San Luis Obispo County. Since then, you have grown the industry by over ten thousand percent. And also, I want to thank you for allowing me to be your unsolicited representative with your wines at national conferences when they're in person. And I'm happy to report that many of those people that you allowed me to share our wines with have joined our wine clubs locally. So hopefully, that's that's helped produce some of those those dollars that you're you're now being able to brag about. And I hope we can get back to some of those relationships and grow the industry even more. Thank you so much for everything you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Joel, thank you so much for the presentation. This really opens my eyes to, I know that we have not had, I have not been able to see this presentation before, but it really opened some eyes to everything that you and your organization are doing. I really appreciate it. I mean, I have lived here for over sixteen years, so I I know that we're in the wine industry, but I did not know all the hard work that you and your organization are doing. I really appreciate that and and keep up the good work. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And Mr. Gregory.
Joel, I too would like to thank your organization for doing a great job. Could you roll down to your media page where you're talking about number of hits and contacts?
Yeah, I think I think Melissa's driving the ship, but I think it's slide seven, if you want to go to it, Melissa, or perhaps Warren is. I have it on my screen, but.
So these are, these are the number of sessions, organic sessions, users.
Yeah.
And your marketing, you're hitting in the millions now on the number of hits on the webpage on page, is it six? Page six?
Yeah, page six, exactly. So those are the ones that we, most of those there are paid efforts. So you're going to hit a lot more when you're paying for them. So digital, print, and radio. A lot of those come from, we we partnered with Travel Paso to do a radio campaign for about ten days. Unfortunately, it was right at the end of February, early March last year, and we were able to reach a lot of people through that. And then and then additionally, beyond that, we did a pretty fun campaign with Wine Enthusiast, where we were delivering, you know, paid ads and paid to to people who kind of are wine lovers all over the country as well. So the the ones that we're paying for in terms of, you know, advertising are hitting into the millions, which is really, you know, a a awesome number for us to hit here in Paso Robles.
And and you you're also doing a podcast. Explain that a little bit. How's that working?
Yeah, great question. So I think that, you know, I've always been a podcast fan. I think during the pandemic, I think everyone became podcast fans because you wanted to spend your time doing something. So we launched something called Where Wine Takes You, and it's hosted by Adam Montiel. We've now done six, we just recorded our sixteenth episode. It's about an hour. It's anywhere from forty-five minutes to an hour. We sit down with two to three winemakers per show. It's on Apple iPod, you know, it's on Apple, it's on Spotify, it's on our website. And I guess that we just reached ten thousand downloads last week. And someone to really to do a deep dive, if they want to come to Paso Robles, they can learn about the history. We've had on everyone from Gary Everly to Tyler, to Tyler Russell, who are one of our board vice chairs and everyone in between, talking about the history of Paso Robles to what's what's next in Paso Robles.
All right. Very impressive. Thank you very much for all your work, sir. Thank you.
Thanks.
So Joel, if if I could just a little bit, could we focus in on a couple of points you made about your organization's participation in the public education process regarding COVID nineteen?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Tell us a little bit more about that.
So so I'll hit on two two points. So the first thing is, is that during twenty twenty, we really had to kind of jump in and quickly become a leader in terms of getting getting communication out. And I think that we were really fast in terms of just getting information from the 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 states and from regional partners out to our members in a really fast, quick way. We were doing daily updates the first few weeks of March, then it became three times a week, and then now it's down to as needed. But so education really was about getting information out to our wineries. Hey, this is the rule. This is the guidelines. Please follow this. Please, please do these things. We've got a really, you know, vibrant relationship with our members. They're calling, emailing, answering emails, and and really kind of clarifying things. Then beyond that, I look forward to this action going forward of making sure that we're we're getting the information out about, you know, the testing side. We've we've been doing that, getting up about testing, about vaccinations, about the new guidelines. And really even, I mean, to be honest with you, we've gotten calls from the county saying, hey, you know, we're seeing some some bad actors here, you know, we're seeing some some challenges here with this this sector of your organization. Can you be in touch with them? So we we haven't had to be like, you know, bad cop, good cop, bad cop, but we've had to definitely definitely make some calls and emails and say, hey, this is the rules. Can you guys make sure that we're trying to follow these? Even though the county and the city have done a great job about trying to be to be really respectful and and allow people to be open, we've had to, you know, certainly be that communicator of what's what's legal and what's not and things like that. So yeah, it can be a difficult, you know, path to walk, as you guys know, as elected officials, but we've been able to do that. And I've been really proud of the information we have gotten out about COVID. I want to be a part of that moving forward, especially as we know that tourism is a big part of the Paso Robles economy right now. So the more we can be proactive in terms of people are being safe and responsible, following those rules, we know we'll have more visitors back to Paso Robles, the better we do in that.
Very good. Thank you again for the presentation, for all the work your organization does. We look forward to speaking with you again in the near future.
Great. Thank you guys so much. Have a great night.
Take care. I understand that now we have Stacy Jacob on the line. We'd like to go back one step on our agenda, the Travel Paso Annual Report. Are we ready to go on that?
Yeah. Hello, Mayor Martin. Can you hear me?
I can.
Excellent. I'm going to go ahead and queue up our presentation. Can I ask, is Victor Pop also on the line tonight?
Don't hear him.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you so much for your time tonight. I apologize. It looks like we had a computer or a, excuse me, a technology glitch earlier. My name is Stacy Jacob. I represent Travel Paso, your tourism marketing destination. This really serves as our annual report for the year. One of the things, as you know, we follow the fiscal year. We are an assessment that guests pay when they stay in a lodging property, whether that be a hotel, a a vacation rental, or now a new RV resort or other RV resorts.
We're still seeing, we're still seeing artwork in the previous presentation. Is your is your deck up?
Oh, thank you. Let me make sure we have this. I appreciate that note. Okay, I was going to share my entire screen. Let's see what's going on here. It's saying that maybe Dave or Melissa is saying it needs permission. Maybe you guys could just queue it up. I know that you have the presentation. For some reason, it's not giving me the capabilities to share screen.
Yeah, we're dealing with gremlins tonight, I think.
Sorry about that. I apologize for these computer issues.
If you could solve them.
Yeah, I wish I could. I I think I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing. That's the frustrating part. Again, I'm just going to ask Dave. I'm trying to get to the.
Stacy, it should be up now.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we can go to the next slide.
There you go.
All right, perfect. So as I was mentioning, I'm Stacy Jacob. I serve as the Executive Director for Travel Paso. John Arnold, our chairman, was planning to be with us tonight but did get called out. He had a front desk issue of a staffing, so he sends his regrets. And we also have Victor Pop, who is our past chairman and director, who I believe is going to be with us tonight, but again, may have gotten called out. So anyway, just wanted, we we were planning to have some board representation here for you to give a little bit more understanding of some of the challenges that really the industry has gone through as we go through COVID. But I'll go ahead and fill in. We did have a great prep call, so I've got some of their feedback and dialogue for our annual report presentation tonight. As I was saying, if we go to the next slide, this actually demonstrates TOT, which is transient occupancy tax, which we talk a lot about as and this slide isn't meant to for you to see necessarily, but this is something that the city actually generates for us every month. And we can compare our different sectors. So hotels, motels, RV resorts, and short-term vacation rentals are all assessed through the Travel Paso lodging or a part of the Travel Paso lodging category. And of that, the assessment, the two percent assessment that guests pay fund the Travel Paso Marketing Fund. In a traditional year, this is around a one point two million dollar fund. Unfortunately, as we all know, we're going through this really interesting year of COVID. And I just wanted to point out, what is so fascinating to me is the importance of our unique lodging mix between hotels, motels, RV resorts, and short-term vacation rentals. If you actually take a minute to dive into these numbers, you're going to see some of the highest of the highs, some of the lowest of the lows. Actually, Ryan Cornell did a great job giving you guys a kind of perspective on this, so I don't need to go through those details because he gave you that report a couple of weeks ago as part of, you know, how tourism has really helped carry part of this load from when when things are open, people are willing to come. And I think that speaks a lot to our destination as a whole. What I wanted to point out here, though, is just some of the record months that short-term vacation rentals and RV resorts have had as a result of this pandemic year. What that says to me is people do want to get out. They want to take that road trip. And Paso Robles is that easy destination. They feel safe here. It's an area they want to come. And we feel like we've been very responsible in our marketing efforts, which we're going to go through a little bit tonight as a result of that. We'll go on to the next slide, please. To start off, you know, we just came off all the accolades the wine industry generates. We've got a lot of accolades that we generate as well as the travel industry. But I think the key thing here is collaboration. As Joel had mentioned, that these two industries, tourism and wine, are truly connected. One does not exist without the other. If we had any doubt in our mind, this past year truly proved that in a very big way. As we, if we go back to a year ago, right now in twenty twenty, well, a year ago, January, Paso Robles was named fifty-two places to go in twenty twenty as part of the New York Times. Travel and Leisure named us the fifty best places to travel in twenty twenty, emerged thirty emerging destinations to visit. So the accolades, these are just some of the very, very top ones. These are national publications that truly are helping to set a standard on what's going on in Paso Robles. And this is press, as we all know, the power of earned media and having other people really help tell our story in a very positive way. We can go on to the next story or the next slide, excuse me. One of the things that we worked really hard this year as when COVID did hit was what could we do? What can we do? What is possible, knowing that we had this amazing destination that people do want to come to? And so we really launched in collaboration with the Paso Robles Wine Country Alliance, the Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Business Association, and of course, the Main Street Association. And and with all of your support, our downtown dining in the park, this alfresco dining experience really did help bring people back. It created a sense of community. It also created a sense of camaraderie. A couple of the numbers, just to mention, we actually launched this right in time for Father's Day weekend, June eighteen, and we were able to run it through October thirty-first. That was truly thanks to the amazing private sector donations that we received. It was truly remarkable how the community came out to support this dining space. A huge shout out to All About Events who donated all the tables and chairs and the umbrellas that were there. We were able to support over seven thousand diners and forty-three restaurants because we actually had a concierge team that was there to really track and measure the success. There actually is a video embedded. I don't know, Warren, if you can, if you click on the image, it should play, just to give a little flavor of what this program was all about. Looks like we may or may not have sound to that. So in any case, it gives you a sense, though, of the restaurant support that this video or that this program really provided. Many of the restaurants were really behind wanting to make this work because at that particular time when this launched, if you recall, we were completely shut down. It was takeout only, so people could get their takeout and go to the park using our amazing iconic location of our park that wasn't being used for events this year as a place for people to gather. So it really was a remarkable opportunity. So I just want to thank our community partners, thank the city. And then Travel Paso really did put the marketing power behind bringing all of this together. We can go on to the next slide. Looks like the presenter, the video is playing again. If we can click to advance one more slide. Excellent. The next slide up is a continued our community collaboration, something we've been working on for many years with the city of Paso Robles, which is our way of finding signage. Really a great opportunity. As you know, Travel Paso partnered with the city to help fund these signs. And and we have a remarkable amount of signage now around the community. In twenty seventeen, it was about sixty thousand dollars that we put in to help underwrite these signs. There are thirty-four signs varying in locations to help direct motorists from the highways to downtown to really provide visitor services. This has been something that we find really remarkable, really helpful, and just really wanted to thank the city also for that partnership and getting these up in a year that we needed them like no other. So it was great to see this come to fruition. And we can go on to the next slide. One of our key milestones this year was to launch our new website, travelpasso.com. This launched in September of twenty twenty, right at the time when we launched our new road trips campaign. Key features, of course, are places to stay, events traditionally. Our events, of course, have evolved currently. Things to do, restaurants, wine country, and plan your trip. I wanted to point out that things to do and events are traditionally the highest trafficked areas on our website. We measure this through Google Analytics to see what pages people are visiting. And so we spend a lot of time really trying to enrich the rich content on these website pages to ensure that folks have an opportunity to see all the different things that are happening in Paso Robles. The unique thing is all of our partners have a unique portal for their account, and they can update their listings. And we encourage all of our tourism partners as part of that ecosystem to keep their information current. Because what it allows us to do is continuing to rank with new information, always ensuring that our destination website is the place for people to go. All right, we can go on to the next slide. Thank you. If we want to, so if we go back a slide for a moment. Sorry, no, this slide. Perfect. Thank you. Just making sure we are where we're supposed to be. Here is, as we mentioned, our next, our website launched, and then we launched our first kind of open campaign, which was truly our road trips campaign. That campaign launched from September through December. It was eight must-drive road trips in Paso Robles. I have to say, this was. I have to say, this was not only the campaign successful, but we saw in our community how people responded to coming back to Paso Robles. If you actually think about those TOT numbers that I mentioned and think about the message that Ryan had provided you, we had record months in September, October, and November of people coming to Paso Robles because they felt that it was time to hit the road. They felt that they wanted to go to a rural area with wide-open spaces. And it was an opportunity for our community and our small businesses to really help rebound and see what that success was all about. One of the other things we did is, in our new world, as we create experience now through these kinds of opportunities of the interface of the web, we actually created our own media tour press opportunity. You see that box in front of you. That was a customized box that we created, and we literally called it our Paso in a Box campaign. We reached out to over 50 writers, who normally we'd be talking to on a regular basis and inviting them to come to Paso Robles. We sent them a beautiful package of wine and beers, craft beers, and ciders, and keychains, and all fun things of Paso Robles. And what we did is we actually put our community on display through a webinar format, exactly how we're attending city council meetings right now. We did this in a way that we can actually bring the players to the writers and literally bring them content. And we've actually seen a tremendous amount of results over Q1 here from this experience of bringing Paso in a Box to our writers. I wanna move to the next slide. And this is another video that actually demonstrates our collaboration with the Paso Robles Wine Country Alliance that also demonstrates why we believe that coming back to Paso and experiencing it in a safe way. I don't believe the sound is actually working in this particular case. But in any case, you'll see what we really tried to do was to demonstrate sanitation, physical distancing, mask-wearing, and people getting together in their pods and coming to our destination. So it was really important for us to hit all of those nuggets as we really communicate our ecosystem and how our ecosystem really came back together and really worked together. I think what was one of the key things that our board said is, as a lodging organization, as a destination organization, lodging is our primary funding source. However, if we don't have restaurants, if we don't have wineries, if we don't have people coming to town in the greater ecosystem, nobody's coming to stay in our rooms and on our vacation rentals. So it was really important for us to really pivot, for lack of a better word, and look at how that ecosystem really came together to help show this beautiful destination. And so a lot of our efforts were normally, we would be focusing on bringing people to the area, were really about supporting the local ecosystem overall this past year. We can go on to the next slide, please. So in the latest shutdown, what we focused on, starting in January through March, is we focused on, instead of going digital, we said, now it's time to go back to the old-fashioned way. Let's go back to postcards. So we actually launched a really beautiful vintage postcard campaign called Postcards from Paso Robles. This is our active campaign that we're currently doing right now. We've actually sent out probably over 6,000 postcard packs to date. This is a four-pack of postcards that we have just invited folks to come and, you know, enjoy what is happening here. We've also been in collaboration with Slow Cal and the Paso Robles Wine Country Alliance as we move into a very unique pack here in March, which will be our wine country pack, which is actually the pack you see in front of you here. The opportunity really is to encourage people to continue the inspiration of Paso Robles. If it's not right in time for them to come now, it's, you know, they can send a postcard to their friend or still dream about the time when they can come back to Paso Robles based on where they are in terms of the pandemic overall. We've also received over 3,000 community requests for these postcards. And we continue to have these postcards being part of our key campaign. You'll actually see our next... You saw our billboard up that was really about the postcards. If you take a look on our website. Again, the thought here is really focused on inspiration overall and to keep Paso Robles top of mind and awareness, so when the time is right, people will continue to come back to our destination. We can go to the next slide, please. So I wanted to actually introduce Victor Pop, who I believe is now with us.
Yes, I am, Stacy. Thank you.
Excellent. Victor, I wanted to... Victor is the General Manager of the La Quinta Resort. And he also is a past Chairman and current Director of Travel Paso. Victor and I were speaking. I wanted him to talk a little bit from a hotelier perspective, some of the challenges on the stop and goes and ups and starts, but yet the opportunity that we have really as a destination from the guests that he's hearing. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Victor, for a few minutes.
Yes, thank you very much for giving the opportunity to just give my perspective on things. And this is really like Stacy said, from the perspective of a Paso Robles hotel manager and then really a owner representative. Certainly, the last 12 months have been the most challenging in probably the 40 years that I've been in the hotel business. I mean, as we know, you know, March of 2020, COVID-19 really became the new norm. You know, that challenged really most everything as we know it. At the La Quinta Inn Suites, you know, once we hit that March-April, income dropped 80% the first month and over 40% for the year. And certainly, we all watched on the news as unemployment rates skyrocketed. And what's unfortunate is that a lot of that was felt in the travel industry and specifically hotels and restaurants and, you know, those businesses that really, really make our Paso Robles economy thrive. At my hotel, we were forced into the decision to go from 40 employees to 11. It was one of the worst days of my business career, letting go 29 employees. I mean, normally, you let people go because they're not performing. I mean, I had to let 29 employees go who were valued, high-performing people. And unfortunately, many of them were heads of their families. And, you know, the general public kind of sees a lot of big corporate names up there on many of the hotels, you know, Wyndham, Holiday Inn, Marriott. And they just kind of think, oh, deep pockets, you know, they'll be okay. You know, we're not going over... Under as many restaurants are. But really, the vast majority of these owners, they're franchisees, and these hotels are owned by small businesses. So, you know, it's not the big business deep pockets that people think they are. And really, most hotels run at a loss in the winter months, relying on the summer to pay the bills. And really, that's the time where you can earn some profit. So this, you know, this past year, you know, was about really earning cash flow, kind of just keep the doors open. In fact, most hotel owners have their local bankers on speed dial now, you know, due to the critical funding and support that they've provided. But really, the reason for me describing such challenging hardships is really to celebrate, you know, how we're getting through it. And local hotels and individual hotel brands can really only do so much. You know, there's only so much cost-cutting and running promotions and rate discounting that you can do. Really, the answer has been use your partners. And that's really the key message here, is that we're fortunate to be in a market where there's a lot going on for it. And certainly, you know, wine and tourism goes hand in hand. And thank God that it's still as strong as it is. And though, you know, and through several years of cooperative marketing efforts, we though knew that the traveling public was still interested in Paso. And then really, what they needed was to be kept in touch with. And I think that's what Stacy has really pointed out today, that they really needed to know that businesses are open, that wineries have a plan to engage with them about wine, and to get the messages about... Out about, you know, important safety measures are in place, you know, to consider their safety. Really, the important message was, when it's right to travel again, we're here for you. You know, and more than ever, now is the time to not only thank all those that gave to our local businesses, but to preserve and support them. Really, for... Without the partners that supported the downtown businesses and restaurants. And by the way, they helped create a new buzzword, Parklets, that have been terrific. Without wineries and their efforts, and the efforts of the Wine Country Alliance, and likewise, they created, who really knew that you can virtually taste wine? I mean, what a development. And really, without the efforts of the Travel Paso, as Stacy has made evident today, I mean, we could be in a whole different situation. And really, one that would not be as well-positioned as we are today to really benefit from the reopening economy. So kudos to everything that the city did, to all of our partners. And then thank you for really getting us to this point where we're positioned to really be able to move forward in a real great community way.
Thank you for that, Victor. I think that's really helpful. I just wanted to also say this concludes our presentation. I really appreciate council's support of tourism. What I think we were really trying to demonstrate tonight, as if it wasn't mentioned, the power of collaboration between our various organizations. We know that you have decisions that you have to make. And we hope that when you look at those decisions, that the tourism and the ecosystem that it creates and those industries that are connected to it will continue to be a priority in your goal-setting and in your decision-making process. And with that, thank you for your time tonight, and we're happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Stacy, and thank you, Victor, for that information. Once again, a lot of information in this presentation, and we appreciate you bringing us up to speed in all the activities over the last year. As I said before, the flow of information has not been as quickly as it has been in times past because of the inhibitions put upon us by COVID-19. But it's good to get caught up on all this stuff. This, again, is a presentation item, requires no action tonight, but we will go to council for comments. Mr. Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just wanna say thank you to Stacy and Victor. I mean, you guys are definitely the partners that make our economy grow and keep going as it has been since this COVID started. So again, appreciate your efforts. Great presentation. Thank you.
And Mr. Strong?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Stacy and Victor. I wanna thank both of you, especially for your emphasis on the cooperation of the entire community and the collaboration between the various elements of tourism, as well as the fact that tourism contributes so much money that helps us keep our citizens' taxes low compared to many places. We have tremendous services at a very reasonable cost, in part, thanks to the amount of money that your industry brings into our community and helps us, in part. So thank you, and thank you for the wonderful way you have marketed. It's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Garcia?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Stacy, I just wanna say thank you. You know, I know that hospitality is very important, not only to our city for our tax money coming back, but also for our community to have their income coming into their homes. I mean, a lot of the hospitality, people that are employed at the hotels and local restaurants, you know, I know that they're eager for... To get back to their norm and get back to work as well. I hear from them a lot as I'm out in the community. And they're hurting. And so I thank you for thinking outside the box to make things happen. And I appreciate everything that you and your team are doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Yes, Stacy, I'd like to say the same. Thank you and Victor for all the things you're doing. Your creations and your innovations are wonderful. I don't think we could have a better organization helping us get out the word about Paso Robles. We really appreciate the comments on supporting our downtown and all of our businesses from a local point of view and bringing all the tourists to us. And working through a tough year and reaching outside the box. Love the postcard presentation and all the things you're doing. So keep up the great work, and thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you again, folks, and we'll hear from you soon.
Thank you.
Up next, we have general public comments. General public comments, a time set aside for people in the community to ask questions, make statements about items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you are going to comment on an agenda item, there will be a public comment time when we discuss that particular item. If you have a general public comment or question, now is your opportunity. We'd like to have you state your name and address so people know who's speaking. And also, you get three minutes now. I'm talking to staff right now. If you could please move Ms. Albin to the top of the list. She's been waiting for an hour, and I will explain why that is. Prior to our closed session meeting this evening, we call for public comments. It's always our practice, a requirement, that we provide a public comment prior to the closed session. Honestly, we very seldom get a call prior to a closed session for public comment. Tonight, we had a call on the line that dropped off. That may have been Ms. Albin, I don't know. And then after we concluded our closed session, we brought it back to open session, and she has a question about a closed session item. Now, generally, we would not do this during general public comment, but certainly, we are open to comments from the public. We wanna make sure that is taken into account. That also a reflection of the fact that we have all been plagued, for some reason, by technological gremlins tonight, at least once my computer has decided to go on vacation, and we've had other glitches. So we wanna make sure that that doesn't defeat our efforts at public communication. So at this time, I'd like to invite Jen Albin to the virtual lectern. She has a question or a comment about a closed session item. And since it is a closed session item, it's more likely than not that I will be referring that to our city attorney. So Jen, are you with us?
I am, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, thank you. I'm Jen Albin. I'm a resident of the Coyle Run Senior Community. And my question is regarding the conference with Real Property Negotiators. The 1345 Park Street property was on the February 16 agenda for discussion and approval and/or approval. And at the end of that discussion, it was determined that it should go back to the drawing board for contract revisions and then come back to council. So now that I see that it has come back on tonight's agenda for a closed session discussion, and that's something that the public, of course, is not privy to. So I wanna be absolutely certain that this item is only being negotiated and will not be approved before it comes back to an open city council meeting for public input.
Thank you for that question. And I can give you the answer, but I want it to be official, so I'm gonna ask our city attorney to weigh in on that.
Oh, yes, that's correct. The closed sessions are for the negotiations, and any final proposed amendments to the sublease would be returning to council in open session.
Very good, thank you. We definitely wanna keep this open and above board. And when we say, no decisions have been made, no decisions have been made. Those get done in public. Thank you, Jen, for calling. Next up, we have Dale Guston. Mr. Guston, welcome.
Hello, Dale Guston. Can you hear me?
We can.
945 Spring Street. And on that 1345 Spring Street, I agree with the previous comments. And I'm disappointed that that project has taken so long to get off the ground. But the main reason I wanna talk on the open session is, I was looking at the agenda for tomorrow's morning's meeting, and I see there's a presentation by the presenter of the parking proposal. And yet, there's nothing in the packet to look at. And that meaning we don't have the ability to YouTube or to see what's going on. So how am I gonna see the presentation?
Okay, we will get your answer for that. Anything else, Dale?
Not on the general comments, except to say, you know, I've been watching the tourism and the wine industry and all that since 1883, when the chamber started the first wine festival. And there's no doubt that we are a shining light in the tourism business. And we will come back to that and still be on top of it. And I know Paso Robles Strong will be a part of it, along with all, as you said, the community collaboration on all these various things that tie into tourism is just marvelous in Paso Robles.
Very good. Thank you for calling, Dale.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Elena Garcia. Elena, are you with us?
Good evening. Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Elena Garcia. Thank you. I'm a resident of Paso, and I'm actually calling about a school board issue. I know this is city council, but I do believe that this issue affects the city as a whole. So at the end of January, for those who don't know, the school board voted to accept committee recommendations for a school site closure of Georgia Brown Elementary School. And the decision isn't finalized, but it definitely appears that the board is making next steps to move in that direction. And this is based on declining enrollment. And this is based on declining enrollment and obvious fiscal failures. And, you know, my concern and the concern of so many community members is that a school site closure, regardless of which school it may be, will affect all students and all families in our district. It would affect student success, class size, traffic, jobs, and more. So, this is not an issue only affecting a small population of our city. It would affect many people. And Georgia Brown was recommended for closure based on the needed repairs. But in Measure M, which was a $95 million taxpayer bond that was passed, they agreed to use, I think, about $14 million for repairs on Georgia Brown. So, why isn't Measure M being used as intended? There's many questions. A school site closure for Georgia Brown would affect a very vulnerable population in Paso, even though they would retain their school. In essence, the school site would be closed. So, I just encourage our community to be involved, speak up. School board meeting is Tuesday, March 9th. You can call during public comments and emails. We need to speak up, and we need help from the community to continue to move this issue forward. And that is it. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you for calling. Okay, next up, we have, and I'm going to apologize in advance, I will mispronounce this, Carmen Bulquen?
Hello, my name is Carmen Bulquen, and I'm a resident of Paso Robles 637 Nicolás Street. And I want to echo what Elena Garcia just said and really stress the importance of making sure that this school is protected. This area, this region of the school, you all know, obviously, but is in the region with the highest Hispanic community and also the highest amount of affordable housing. And so, this is a neighborhood school, and the location of it is really crucial for a lot of these families. And so, protecting that, protecting that neighborhood is really crucial. But I wanted to bring up the response to COVID from the city. It's been, I think, pretty frustrating, I think, for all of us, just like experiencing COVID. But I do believe that the city is not taking further enough action and is relying too much on nonprofits to do the work for them. As a member of Paso People's Action, we've been doing a lot of COVID outreach, and we shouldn't have to do as much as we do. There's a lot of misinformation out there, and it would be so helpful if the city was doing more of this outreach. And I want to address the issue of housing, because I am a renter, and Paso Robles is one of the most unaffordable places to live. And so, especially with COVID. But relying on ECHO and Self-Help People's Housing to do a lot of the houseless outreach and also long-term affordable housing is not enough. We need more housing advocates on the city council that are going to push for affordable housing at every level of government and also every level, every planning commission project that's happening, especially the new development on the east side, the big Beechwood, Pacific Land, and then also the larger one on the west side, on the east side. But I just really want to stress the importance of taking action during this time and not relying on tourism or like on the tourist agencies, businesses, and nonprofits to do this work, because it is taking a toll on us, and we need more support and more effort being done by the city, especially with COVID outreach and especially making people, making sure that people are wearing masks and making sure that people are staying safe and social distancing. Just because we have gone up a lever doesn't mean that it's not going to get worse, and making sure that we're staying safe. But we need to see that initiative from the city, and I really, really want to stress that we can do that if y'all are able to, like, take a step up and push developers and push imagining different ways of housing our community and also push zoning and rent relief. I wanted to infer, there's been $5 million in rent relief that the county was given to ECHO, Five Cities Homeless. Oh, this is too long. Okay, but I'll ask this question next time. Thank you so much.
Thank you for calling. The gremlins have struck my alarm tonight. Okay, I have no one else in the queue for general public comment. I'm going to close general public comment, bring it back for some answers here. I was unsure Mr. Guston's concern about a meeting tomorrow and the ability of the public to have input into the parking situation. Can someone give us some enlightenment there?
Yes, Your Honor, this is City Clerk Melissa Martin. The agenda that was posted for tomorrow's meeting, the Downtown Parking Advisory Commission meeting, does give instructions as to how the public can request to attend the meeting virtually by either calling in to make that request or submitting an email request to do so. And once they do that, we will provide them with the meeting information and the ability to log in directly to the meeting.
Very good. Thank you. There were a couple of comments about school board actions, and while I'm sensitive to that and certainly understand the concern being expressed, the school board is an independent body. The city has really no influence over their decisions. They're quite independent and deal directly with the state. So, I really recommend that folks continue to lobby their school board members, make sure that those issues are raised in front of that body and are handled there, because really, there's not a lot we can do about that. On city COVID response and also affordable housing, obviously, there is always more that can be done. It's always my suspicion that folks may not know completely what has been done. So, I would like to ask staff to perhaps get back to Carmen with a report, a list of the activities we've done in response to the COVID situation, and also a brief outline on our efforts regarding affordable housing, meeting arena numbers, and assisting other agencies in developing affordable housing. If there's no problem with that, I don't have anything else on my list, and I'd like to go to the next item on the agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, Councilman Strong, could I answer that housing question a little bit, too?
Sure.
That the housing, that the city does participate through its representatives on other agencies.
Yeah.
So, for instance, as the council knows and some people know, I'm our representative at Slocog. And Slocog is involved in a five-county special major regional agency created by the state, which has a housing task force that I'm one of the two representatives from this region on.
Great.
And that has provided significant money to local jurisdictions to plan and zone for low-income housing and also plan different housing plans for low-income housing that builders can use. But the actual construction is a private industry matter.
Right.
And although we can encourage them, we can't command them to do so any more than we can command an individual citizen to do something in their own home.
Right.
So, that's basically where we're at, and we are still working through the National League of Cities and other national and state organizations to get additional rent and mortgage relief, and that's up to them whether or not they're going to provide it.
Very good. Thank you. So, to staff, when you do reply to Carmen, if you would, obviously, you want to put all the contact information about the council, but please make sure that Mr. Strong's associations are noted, so if she wants to go into depth on those subjects, he would be the one to talk to. I appreciate that. Okay, I'll ask now if we have any agenda items to be deferred for this evening?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you very much. We move on then to our consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine, not requiring separate discussion. However, if discussion is wanted by a member of the council or the public, the item may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Council members and members of the public may offer comments or ask questions of clarification without removing an item from the calendar. In fact, if that is the way, your question can be resolved as preferred. Otherwise, we all have to wait till the end of the evening. Individual items are approved by the vote that approves the consent calendar unless an item is pulled for separate consideration. And again, items pulled from the consent calendar will be moved to the end of the agenda tonight. So, with that, I will ask council members if they have comments, questions, or items to be pulled from the calendar. Mr. Hammond?
I have none. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strong.
I have none. I noticed that we do have a public comment coming up on one of our items, and the public comment relates to an action that was an action already taken and not to an approval of minutes.
Okay, and Ms. Garcia?
No, sir.
Mr. Gregory?
No comments. Thank you.
Okay, and I do not see anyone on my list wanting to comment on the consent calendar. Does staff have anyone else in the queue?
No, sir.
Very good. In that case, we will open public comment, bring public comment to a close, because we have no one waiting, bring it back to the council, and I would enter into motion to accept the consent calendar.
We approve the consent agenda for 4/13.
And I'll second that and note that we did have a written public comment, however, that we obviously...
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. You're right. We had a written comment, but we had no one waiting in queue. Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Strong. If there's no further discussion regarding the consent calendar, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. And before we proceed, if we could please have a report on the items approved, so the people listening in know exactly what we've done.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, the council on its consent calendar approved city council minutes from February 10th, February 12th, February 16th, and February 20th. This council has been very, very busy recently. The council also approved the warrant register, and for this period, it totaled $3.4 million, of which $2.7 million was for 911 emergency equipment, and $200,000 was for the Golden Hill tank, water tank refurbishment. The council also approved the application of a grant request to the State Park Development and Community Revitalization Program for funds for Phase 1 of Sherwood Park rehabilitation and modernization. The council remembers it adopted the Sherwood Park Master Plan in February 2019, and this is for the area of Sherwood Park from Scott South to Cedarwood East from Kruston. And we did apply once before for a grant for this portion of the project, and we're not successful. There is no matching requirement on this grant. The council also approved an agreement with Caltrans and with the RCD for the rehab of Centennial Creek. And this will replace and add some culverts and bridges, as well as two acres of new plantings. And it will, is designed to both beautify the area as well as reduce erosion and potential damage to city property. It also provides for a long-term endowment for maintenance of the park, or the creek, actually. And this is the area pretty much west of Nickerson, all the way down to Navajo. The areas east of Nickerson, between Centennial Center and the high school, all the way over to Lana, was upgraded in 2015. The council approved a digital signature policy for the city, and it establishes the standards that the city can use for digital signatures, which are a subset of electronic signatures for both documents internal to the city as well as external. And finally, on consent this evening, the council approved the ability of the city to agree with Questa College to fund two part-time intern positions in the city manager's office. The interns will be paid for by Questa, so this is not a cost to the city. And it would be for part-time interns to assist the city in its bilingual community outreach program and other services. And that is the sum total of your consent calendar approvals tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you for that report. Next up, we have public hearings, item number 14, Approval of 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the Annual Action Plan. City staff report, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, this is Darren Nash, city planner. Before you tonight is the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Final Action Plan. As council may recall, back in December of 2020, we brought the draft action plan to you. Those consisted of eight applications that were submitted in October for the 2021 program. Back in December, council reviewed the applications and directed staff to come forward tonight with the final action plan. So, what is community development block grants, or known as CDPG? They're federal funds allocated through the county for the following purposes: generally benefiting low-income persons and eliminating blight. Funding priorities, so there's three different sections of the funding that you'll see in tonight's staff report. One is a public improvement projects, second is public service programs, and then the third is grant administration. The city is anticipating $244,146 is the allocation for the 2021 program. Of that, up to 80% could be spent on a public project, and $48,000 could be spent on administration. The city also has the ability to spend up to 15% on public services, which is typically what the city of Paso Robles does. We like to help out the public services that apply. That is an option to the city. The city could take that 15% and put it towards a public improvement project. At the draft action plan back in December, council requested that staff come back with the utilization of the 15% to public services. So, when that breaks out, you see about $160,000 would be public improvements, $36,000 to public services, and around $48,000 to administrative administration. And it's important to note that of the administration, the city has entered into a cooperation agreement with the county. The county, the federal funds come through the county. The county administers and helps the different local jurisdictions with this program. And they do a lot of administrative work to administer that program, including work that's done for the city. So, as part of the cooperation agreement, 7% would stay with the city, and the 13% would go to the county, which is typical for the CDPG programs. The public improvement project that was applied for by the city this year was the Black Oak Drive Infill Ramp and Driveway Approach Project. This is a capital improvement project that will install pedestrian ramps and some drive approaches along Black Oak Drive. This would be in the vicinity of the Home Key Motel 6 homeless project and would help work on these improvements that would go from the corner there of Black Oak Drive down to 24th Street and would help with pedestrian and accessible access for that stretch of the road. And here's a vicinity kind of indicating the location of the ramps. So, looking at the screen to your right would be the Motel 6, the Home Key Project. There are some ramps in that area, and then moving to the south, there are some curb ramps or some drive approaches, and then other curb ramps along 24th Street. This is a list of the applications. The eight applications indicated the Black Oak Drive project. The second is an application by the organization Rise. They have requested some funds for some repairs to a roof of one of their facilities. And then we have requests from CASA, People Self-Help, Five Cities Homeless Coalition, El Camino Homeless Organization, Community Action Partnership of San Luis Obispo County, and then there's the administrative request by the city. Another point to note is when you look at the public service applications, some of those are pretty small amounts in the scheme of the whole of $240,000. Those particular organizations have applied through other cities in the county, including the county. So, with those multiple requests by different municipalities, they reach the threshold for the minimum of the $8,000 threshold. And it's important to note, because of that, if you look at the total requested is about $36,000, the total available... The total available is just above the 36,000, so that gives the council the ability to fund all of those public services for the amounts they've requested, including about $500 in excess, which you'll see in the numbers. We've put the extra $500 towards the Echo Grant for a total of the $12,500. The other component with this CDPG program request this year is a reallocation of 2017 funds. There was a project on Scott Street near the Sherwood Park. It was called the Oak Creek Park Project. That consisted of some curb ramps, some infill sidewalks along Scott Street. It's been determined that these improvements may be possible from other projects, including some grants that are in the works for the Sherwood Park. And then there's also some work that would be done on Cruston Road in Cedarwood, which was included in this 2017 project. That would be some improvements that are conditioned to be done by some of the future specific plans. So with the possibility of these, this work being done by other projects, we're looking at reallocating this, these funds to some, a few other projects, one being the 2019 Sierra Benita Curb Ramp Project, and then the other being the request for the $35,000 for the Rise Roof Repair. And so we'll take a look at that here shortly. And here we go. So $119,692 needs to be reallocated. What we came forward with the council back in December with the draft action plan was to fund the $35,000 for the roof repair for Rise, and then the additional $84,000 to go to the Sierra Benita Ramps Project. That Sierra Benita Ramps Project, I believe, is around 16 curb ramps. This is a project on the city's list of accessible projects that need to be, needs to be addressed. This project is nearing completion, or nearing start of construction, so the Public Works Department is working on that. In order to complete all those ramps, there are some additional funds needed, and that's the request is to reallocate funds to that 2019 Sierra Benita Project. So this is what was directed from the council to staff with the draft action plan, which is the option we have before you tonight. And the options before you tonight would be option one, to take no action for CDPG this funding cycle, or option two, to recommend to the San Luis Obispo County to allocate the $158,695 to the Black Oak Drive Sidewalk Ramp Project. $36,662 would be for the five public service program applications. The $48,829 for the allocation for the administration of the CDPG program, and $35,000 to Rise for the roof repair, and then reallocate the $84,692 to the Sierra Benita Ramps. And then we could modify that as council sees appropriate. The recommendation before the council tonight is option two. This would be, as I just indicated, laid out here in these options, including the reallocation of the 2017 CDPG funds. So that would conclude my report. I believe we may have somebody that has public comment, or a representative from Rise on the phone, Jane Palmeroy. So we'll see if she's still available when you get to that point. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that. If Jane is available, why don't we go ahead and get her comments before we have council questions?
Hi, Darren. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I submitted some written comments. I'm just here in case you have any questions.
Okay.
About the Rise Roof.
In that case, we'll head to that portion of the discussion. How's that? Okay, so this is the way the process, this is the way the process works. The council takes the opportunity to ask clarifying questions. Then we go to public comment for the public's input, and then that is finished. We bring it back to the council for discussion and decision. So council questions, starting with Councilman Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Darren, is there any way down there on Black Oak Drive that we can repair the street as well, let alone, you know, we got sidewalk? But yeah, that whole section down there, along, parallel on the highway, is pretty rough, pretty bad. I don't know where it is in the plan, PCI plan, but the point is, if we're going to be doing that, you know, there's people that drive there also that are going to the, you know, Motel Six project that might benefit from that as well. Is there any way we can add or carve some of that out to help the street, or at least patch it?
That's a great question. There's a lot of challenges along Black Oak Drive, especially at that corner. So you may know that there's quite a, quite a dip there at that corner, and then it seems to be always wet. And we've learned through this process of looking at this project that there's actually a spring that's going, that's causing that water in that area, which, as you know, doesn't blend well with asphalt. However, I have worked closely with Kristen Feravani and DSS Baranz on this project, and given the amount that we have for the project, these are the improvements specifically related to the requirements of CDPG and using them for accessibility-type infrastructure. However, your point is noted, and I can check back with them to see if there's any opportunity to accompany these improvements with some pavement, or at least see where this road may be on the list of improvements with the Public Works Department.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd really appreciate it. If we're going to get into the improvement of that whole Black Oak Way there, that definitely we should get to the street as well, find some money somewhere that we can get it all done, put it to bed. So that's why I need, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Strong?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And on the ramps there in Sierra Benita, I'm assuming that these are not repayments for any of the ramps that have already been done. These are for new ramps that are scheduled to be done almost immediately? Is that correct?
That's correct. So Sierra Benita has been part of the CDPG project for, for multiple program years, and Public Works Department's been working over the whole neighborhood over the years with these different grant funds. And this should, these last ramps should be the last for that Sierra Benita neighborhood. So this is ramps that have been out of compliance for many years. It's not some of the recent ones that have been done.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Garcia?
Yes, sir. Darren, that was actually my question as well. If we've seen Sierra Benita ramps on, on this multiple occasion, so that was my question. Is this going to finish the project?
That's correct. It's my understanding and really why we wanted to reallocate some more funds is I think we can finish up the ramps that are on the list in the Sierra Benita neighborhood.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, Darren, I just have a technical question. With these kinds of funds, are we, is it permissible to use them for road repairs? Or is it just for pedestrian access, like curbs and ramps and gutters and stuff like that?
You know, I'm sure there are situations when they could be used for road repairs. However, when you take a look at the, the rules and regulations for CDPG, it really has to do with, you know, dealing with pedestrians or handicapped or children. And a lot of times that best is suited for sidewalks and curb ramps, things where pedestrians or facilities where pedestrians are going, not typically cars. But if you recall, kind of the 13th Street project, we used some CDPG funds for 13th and Pine. So we redid the four curb ramps at 13th and Pine. There were some crosswalks and things that were included with that. But that also melded with a city project to improve 13th Street. So there are times when it gets out into the street, but generally the pedestrian facilities are the first off block.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. If there are no further council questions, we will open public comment. I have two people waiting in queue. First, we have Dale Guston. Welcome, Dale.
Dale Guston, 945 Spring Street. I'm looking at option two on my screen. And I, I don't have any question with the allocations, except every year, it seems like the administration cost is, is far in excess of what it should cost to administer these programs. It's just, it just galls me that we spend 20% on administration. I think that's way too high. That's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Jenna Nichols. Welcome, Jenna.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak very briefly with you this evening. We appreciate your consideration and support. I wanted to let you know that we are actively involved in the Project Home Key project and are looking forward to providing deposit assistance for folks who are moving into that opportunity that you have created there. And I wanted to let you know just briefly, as one example of how lives can be changed. I realize this is a minor request in, in the scheme of things, but this, just last week, we moved a family into a three-bedroom apartment. It was a family of four, with a 12-year-old and a six-year-old. Mom is no longer working because she's dealing with childcare. And we were able to move them out of a one-bedroom, where they were doubled up with three other families, into their own three-bedroom apartment, into a far healthier environment, and the children are thriving. And so we appreciate your support, and I hope that this serves as one example of many that we can help to partner with the city to achieve, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much, and thank you for calling in tonight.
Mr. Mayor, can we get Jenna Nichols to indicate what organization she's representing?
Yes, I was going to ask the same thing. Jenna, if you're still online, could you tell us who you're associated with?
I, if I'm still there, I am associated with Five Cities Homeless Coalition.
You're here, and we heard you, and we thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate your support this evening, and at least your consideration.
I see no one else waiting in queue. I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. We have the recurring question, which has to be on everybody's minds, and that is how are administrative costs calculated for these funds? And I will note that if I understand the graphs correctly, we take a small portion of that compared to the county. So who on staff would like to comment on the calculation of administrative costs?
Be happy to. This is Darren. So, yes, the, the funds, the split between the county and the city, the county gets more than what the city does, but to tell you the truth, the county does quite a bit of work. There's a lot that goes involved with this program. While the city works more on the public service projects, so I help administer with Public Works getting these curb ramp projects done. But the public services, there's a lot involved with that. And the county actually is the agency who manages those, those grants, the paperwork, meets with the folks, holds meetings on all of those. And that's, that takes a lot of time for a small grant amount. And so the county does that. They have personnel and staff to do that. So it's very helpful, the, the work that the county does. And, you know, that's how, how the percentages work out with the grant amounts that's, that's received.
So Darren, do you know, when these administrative costs are set, are they actually calculated based on the cost of personnel and overhead, or are these calculated on, on a percentage? How's the actual exercise handled?
Right. So the percentages are set out by the federal government for the CDPG program. So the 20% for administration cost is coming from the rules and regulations for the CDPG program, and that's based on a percentage of the amount that's received per municipality.
Do we in the city ever do a reconciliation on the actual time and effort put into our part of managing these funds so that we get some idea of how accurate this is?
Yes, we're required to report our time because we get reimbursed. So that's what this is, is for the time that's spent on administering these programs and bringing them to council and working on the applications. All of that's reimbursable. That comes back to the city. So we put in our time for reconciling that 7% that the city gets.
Very good. And so we recoup the value of the city's participation through this fee system? Otherwise, it would fall through to our, our residents to pay for it.
That's correct.
Thank you very much. I have no other questions on the list to be answered, so we're going to go to the council for discussion. Mr. Hammond?
No, I, I have no issues with the allocations that we have presented. Certainly, to approve it anytime you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strong.
Yes, I have no, only question I would have is, when we make the motion, can we make the motion just to approve option X? Or do we have to read every single thing in there?
I'd be willing to say option X, but
Okay.
If the attorney says that can't be done, I'm sure she'll chime in.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Garcia?
Nothing to add, sir.
Thank you. And Mr. Gregory?
I like the list. I'm ready to make a motion.
Let her roll.
I move that we recommend to approve that San Luis Obispo County allocation of $158,000 to Black Oak Drive Sidewalk Ramp Project, $36,662 for the five public service program applications, $48,829 for the allocation administration of the CDPG program, $35,000 to the Rise Roof Repair, and $84,692 to the 2019 Sierra Benita Ramps Project.
And Strong seconds.
Motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Strong. If there's no further discussion on the motion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Item number 15, approval of demolition permit and conditional use permit 20-06 to demolish remnants of the former Clausen's Radiator Service Building and to reconstruct a new building in its place to be used for auto repair. Staff report, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is Darcy Delgado, associate planner, and I'll be giving the presentation tonight. So this project involves a demolition of a historical resource, which requires review by the city council. And the project was first considered by Planning Commission on January 12th, at which time it was recommended the city council approved both the demolition and the conditional use permit. And so the project site is located on the west side of the city. It's located near the intersection of Spring and 16th Streets. Lubango is immediately adjacent to the north, and that is owned by Joe Simonin, who has also become the recent owner of the Clausen's Building. And so there are two components to the project request. The first is the demolition permit to demolish the remnants of the former Clausen's Building. That building is listed on the city's historical inventory, based on it representing a rare example of an early auto-related property and its unique architectural style. And secondly, the project requests to reestablish auto repair at the site so that it can function ancillary to the Lubango. And they also would like to rebuild the structure using a similar design as the existing building. But that design is non-conforming, or at least the building is non-conforming to the current development standards. And so tonight's action will be to make a decision on the project as a whole, since the use permit is subject to the demolition permit also being approved. And so this is a section from the Historic Preservation Ordinance, which dictates that city council is authorized to approve a demolition of a designated historic resource, subject to the finding that the demolition is necessary to protect or promote the health, safety, or welfare of the citizens of the city, including the need to eliminate or avoid blight or nuisance. Here are a couple photos showing the structure. So it's Here are a couple photos showing the structure. So it's no longer a complete building, as there is no roof, and then some of the supports are being held together via wire ties and ropes. Based on the current state of the structure posing a safety concern to the community, the request to demolish the building would comply with the Historic Preservation Ordinance findings. Here is the site plan, which was included with the use permit request. It shows that the new building has been designed to function ancillary to the adjacent Lubango. It would be used for tire repair, brake checks, and other quick service items. This exhibit also shows the traffic flow of vehicles. Customers would first park in the Lubango parking lot as they normally would, then employees would take the vehicle next door while the customers wait at Lubango. With regards to the conditional use permit, the site has historically been used for auto-related businesses. City records indicate that the site has not been actively used for auto-type services in nearly nine years. And because of this time lapse, and the fact that auto repair is now non-conforming in this zone, a conditional use permit is necessary to allow the use to be reestablished at this location. And in the Uptown Town Center Specific Plan, which is the code that this project has been reviewed under, uses that have been abandoned for three or more years can request a conditional use permit to be reestablished. The new building is proposed to be constructed very similar to the architectural style of the Claussen's Building to pay homage to the site's past. In this case, however, the building would not comply with the Uptown Town Center Specific Plan Development Standards. And that site plan on the prior slide showed the building in the center of the parcel, whereas the specific plan would require that the building be right along the project's frontage with the parking in the rear. So the specific plan also allows structures to be made to a previous state of nonconformity with the conditional use permit. If doing so would not have a significant adverse effect on public safety or the existing visual character of the neighborhood. And so based on the current state of the dilapidated building and being located along the historic Spring Street corridor, staff feels that the project would improve the aesthetics of the property and this section of Spring Street despite not meeting the current development standards. Lastly, at its meeting in January, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the project with a change to the conditions of approval to require that the final exterior details of the building be reviewed by the Development Review Committee, since they're still in a conceptual stage. And so these recommended changes were reflected in your staff report packets. Overall, staff feels that the project as conditioned would be an improvement at this location, and reestablishing the auto repair use would be compatible with the adjacent Lubango. And so here are the options before you tonight. One would be to take no action, two, to approve the demolition of the structure and reestablishment of the auto repair use and new construction at 1534 Spring Street, three, to approve the project with modifications, or four, to provide alternative direction to staff. Staff's recommendation is option two, and so I've listed the approving resolutions. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Council questions come first, then public comments, starting with Councilman Hammond.
I have nothing for Darcy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Strong.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with so much effort being made lately to destroy the history of our area and nation, how close is this reconstruction to the original that was there as a historical thing? And are we going to have a plaque giving the history of the site somewhere on the building or on the site?
So the applicant is voluntarily wanting to rebuild the structure, similar to what was there previously. It is not a requirement. So we did do a mitigated negative declaration environmental study with this project, and because the building is, you know, just not even a building at this point, we essentially did not make a finding that they had to rebuild it to what it is today, because it's really not, you know, it's it lost a lot of historical integrity, although it is on our historical inventory. So the applicant does want to rebuild very similar, but they are we are going to revisit the, you know, color material palette. It is going to look similar, but I don't know how close it'll match, just since the original Claussen's Building has, when you look at the, you know, the interior facade, it's changed so much over the years to know what it really looked like, you know, in its glory days. I'm not sure that the architect, you know, could replicate that necessarily, but perhaps we can hear more from the architect during public comment.
Yeah, because I'm just wondering if at least they're making some effort to somewhat replicate it so that it has that flavor and that general style, so that we are preserving some history rather than destroying it.
Yes, and to follow up on that, there is the intent to reconstruct the kind of the historic sign. So part of the redoing of this project, one of the most significant historical aspects is the this pole sign. That's highway-oriented type pole sign when this used to be the highway going through town. So the conditions of this project within the applicant is looking forward to repurposing the sign and restoring it back. I believe they also plan on using, you know, maybe the Claussen's sign somewhere in the project. It could be on the back or the interior for not to confuse who's in the building, but there are aspects like that. Also reusing one of the old pickup trucks that was on this site for many years and having it outside as a kind of a landmark for this project. So there are things that's being done to help restore and help keep some of that historic nature of the project.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, sir. I had a question. I think Darcy was mentioning something about the parking. Did you say the parking is going to be in the back, Ms. Darcy?
So the way that the site has been set up, they don't they don't have a parking lot set up because the customers will be driving directly to Lubango, and it is the employees who will be taking the vehicles to the subject site and queuing them in from the rear alley and then, you know, moving them through the building and then back out. So they don't have a parking lot. When I had mentioned before the nonconformity of the structure, with the specific plan today, typically we would see the building right along Spring Street, and then parking, if there was a parking lot, it would be accessed from the rear. Because with this conditional use permit, we have added a condition that if that for any future use, regardless of whether it's auto repair or something else, if it any future use that wants to be standalone and independent of Lubango, we'll have to amend this use permit because we don't have a parking lot planned, and we need to understand how the site could function standalone. So we have conditioned it in the event, you know, something down the road wanted to do something different.
Okay. My concern is that 16th Street trying to cross, right across the street is Bank of America. There's a lot of traffic in that area right there. So I just I'm just concerned about the people parking in front on Spring Street. When you try to turn out from 16th Street into Spring Street, sometimes there's some big trucks that park right in that corner, and you can't see to drive out onto Spring Street.
So the circulation plan was something that was put together by the applicant at the request of the Development Review Committee early on to see, you know, how vehicles could circulate through the two parcels. So this is what the applicant came up with, trying to, as opposed to, you know, making left turns. And so certainly, if the council would like to, you know, see something different, we can always, you know, create a condition for them to modify the circulation plan and for that to go back to the Development Review Committee with the architectural review, if that's something the council desires.
Okay. Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you, Councilman Gregory.
Darcy, first question, are you sure this wasn't a movie set on the inside? Looks like a movie set. Anyway, so and my question is for operational uses. So it's this is like a Lubango, and then they're adding the additional amenity of doing brakes and tires or something like that? Is that what the second building's for?
Correct. So quick items that they can't already do at Lubango, so this will just be an expansion, but kind of have its own distinct look.
Yes, it's clever. And then I looked, we looked at another project of this a while ago. I think it was the Caesar's Pizza. Not sure what it was, but I think that conditioning them to have right-only turnout onto Spring Street would be the safest way to go. I like the right in and right out on both going into the facility on 16th and the right-hand turn on Spring Street. So is that a condition of approval, or is that still that to be decided?
So right now, we don't have any conditions of approval specific to the circulation plan. That was what was submitted. So as we, you know, as we would move forward in next stages, this is an exhibit of the resolution to approve the use permit. So we would anticipate that down the road. This is how the property would function. And if there was ever a complaint, we would look back at this use permit and say, oh, well, there's, you know, circulation plan. So although there's not a specific condition written out, this this does become part of the approving resolution.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. So I a couple of questions. I want to go back to Councilwoman Garcia's concerns about traffic. Generally, entering streets, the middle of the street like this, line-of-sight conditions are an issue. Did the Planning Commission discuss that?
No, line-of-sight issues did not come up during Planning Commission.
Okay. I'm not unsure what the volume of traffic coming out of it would be, but Spring Street is a very busy street, and that could cause problems. On the existing antique sign, if we can't direct the applicant to do this, but I would think that if it's not going to be incorporated in the final revised project, that it probably should be offered to the Pioneer Museum, because that's something that should be preserved for local history.
Right. So we so that was actually one of the critical components of the mitigated negative declaration was the sign to retain the, you know, some historical value on the site. And so there is a condition, actually, it's a mitigation measure for the sign to be restored and utilized on-site to the best of their ability. If they're unable to do so, if there's some reason that prevents them from doing this, there is the option to donate the sign to a local museum.
Okay, very good. If there are no further council questions, we're going to go to public comment. I have no one waiting in queue for public comment. I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion. Mr. Hammond?
No further discussion. Ready to make a motion. We'd be ready.
Very good. Mr. Strong?
No, I'm ready to second a motion.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia?
Nothing further, sir.
And Mr. Gregory?
Ready to the third of the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond, you had first call on the motion.
Okay, that'd be fine. Then I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the demolition of the former building and reestablish the auto repair use and new construction at 1534 Spring Street by taking the following actions. Number one, approve Resolution 21 XXX, approving the mitigated negative decoration for the project and thereby approving the demolition. And two, approve Resolution 21 XXXB, approving conditional use permit 20-06.
Strong seconds.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Strong. If there's no further discussion on the motion?
I have a question, Steve.
Mr. Gregory?
I just want to thank the owner of this business for fixing up this law. It's long overdue, and it's going to be a great addition. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Item number 16, under discussion results of our community visioning and goal-setting session February 20th, 2021. Mr. Fritchie?
Thank you, Your Honor. The slides will be up in just a second. As the council remembers, on February 20th, you did have your goal-setting session, and this next slide, please, was the first time you'd had an opportunity to do that since 2018, which was your prior visioning and goal-setting session. And in 2018, you developed the following six areas of priority and focus. That does not mean that other things the city does are not equally vital to the well-being of our community, but these are the areas you felt needed particular attention to ensure that we are meeting the council's vision and the community's needs. Next slide, please. Had the session on February 20th, which was facilitated by Nancy Hetrick of Management Partners, the person who also facilitated your session in 2018. It was really a two-session day, and in the morning, the focus was providing everyone in attendance, and we had quite a good turnout by members of the community. In fact, the final numbers were very close to, if not in excess, of what we had in 2018. The facilitator reviewed the 2018 goals, and we had a chance to go through some of the achievements of the city and meeting those goals over the past three years. Then the facilitator, using data that she had developed, as well as data provided by the city, looked at the current context. What is the situation we're currently favoring? What are trends and numbers that are positive and working in the favor of our community, and what are the problem areas? And then finally, based on those prior discussions, the facilitator provided several opportunities for the members of the community in attendance to provide input to the council, both as in an overall setting, as well as in small groups, and by actually using technology for polls, for example. Then after a quick break, the council came back, and the focus of the afternoon was for the council members, the five of you, to discuss what you'd heard in the morning, what you've seen, the input you've been provided, as well as your own thoughts, and then come to a determination as to what you saw would be the focus areas going forward. Next slide, please. And one of the benefits of this kind of visioning process is not only throughout the year, as you have council meetings, can you ensure that the actions you take are consistent, but it also frames the budget process. And so as you also remember, Mr. Cornell had previously given you the fiscal forecast and updated forecast, both for the budget year as well as for the 10-year period. And that forecast, in addition to your goal-setting results, really provide the framework for the budget process, so that we will be developing both the operating budget and the capital project budget based on the context you provided in your goal-setting. And clearly, what we're trying to ensure is that the budget, given our limited funds and the needs of the community, does the best we can in providing benefits to the entire community for the long term. And so the things we look at as a result of both the forecast and the goal-setting results is what can we accomplish, given our likely resources? What can we recommend to the council? What decisions the council can make the best use of the resources we have? And in consideration of that, we look at trade-offs. Government isn't generally able to solve problems. We try to make much progress we can, but they tend to stay around. And so what are the trade-offs in our actions? What are the interdependencies in the programs we offer? What are unintended consequences? Because every action by government unfortunately has unintended consequences. And so we look at all those things when we're considering the recommendations to you in your budget process. Next slide, please. So as a result of your Saturday session and all the input you got and the deliberation amongst the council members, you agreed upon these six overarching priority areas. And as you can see, they have some very strong similarities to what you did in 2018. So that's a positive, that you're seeing consistency, but also evolving your thoughts and views based on the changing needs of the community that have been effectuated not only over the course of time, but because of the pandemic. Next slide, please. So in addition to Nancy Hetrick in facilitating, we did this year, as we did in 2018, have a graphic recorder. Some people do better when they see things visually. And so this is a very convenient way and powerful way for us to bring back these priorities over the coming weeks in the budget process, as well as over the coming years, just as a reminder and really a way to check back and reference to make sure what we're doing is consistent with your overall priorities. So you see the areas of branches in this very large and stately oak tree are the six overall priority areas. very large and stately oak tree are the six overall priority areas. And within each are the specific goals that you discussed and agreed upon. There are no priorities among the six. Just because one is higher up or, or whatever does not mean that given priority area is any more important than any other. So the following slides actually take the text within each of the six priority areas and identify them, as you saw in your staff report. And we'd like to just very briefly give you the opportunity to review those tonight, because the intent is to make sure, two weeks later, after you've had a chance to reflect and probably receive input from additional people in the community, that these are in fact the priority areas that you wish to establish for this year's budget process and thereafter. Next slide, please. So the first overall priority area, once again, no significance that this is first. It just happens to be the top-left branch area of the tree. It's community health and economic recovery. And these are the five goal areas you agreed upon within this overall area. I'm not going to read them. Certainly, when we get to the end, if you have any questions on any of these, and what we're going to be asking you to do is modify any of these, if, if based on your review tonight or input you've received, you feel there's a better way to phrase or slight modification you'd like to make. All right, next slide, please. It'll be the second overall priority area, infrastructure needs and opportunities. Next slide, please. The third overall area is public safety. This one, you came up with much more detailed six areas within this public safety rubric. Okay, next slide, area number four, housing and homelessness. You had a caller tonight who thought the city should be doing more. And note that last bullet, building on the existing partnership with Echo, that's a very expensive project that has significant city contribution in it. And in addition, for example, just at your prior council meeting, you approved $1 million worth of deferred fees for an affordable housing project for seniors in Woodland Plaza 2. So the caller may not be aware of all the things that council is doing, the city is doing, to support housing for people of lesser economic means. Next slide, please. Fifth overall area is quality of life. And the way it was originally written was quality of life slash amenities. I've substituted and for the slash, because I believe that according to the dictionary, amenities are more those things that make life pleasant, which is great, and we want to do that. But the services we offer, many of them are much more vital than just making life pleasant. So our fantastic library and the services it offers, helping people find jobs, helping people do taxes, we're offering services that improve people's quality of life, but it's not solely to make life more pleasant. So if the council liked to put this back the way it was, that's great, but I think it actually reads better this way. And then the last, next slide, please. The last of the six categories is similar to the category we had in 2018, which is ensuring that we provide high-quality governance to our community. Next slide, please. So those are the six priority areas. I've suggested two areas you might want to consider for refinements. The first is, there was a lot of public input Saturday morning on the 20th about the city's current efforts to improve diversity and inclusion and take advantage of the diverse community we have. But those concepts didn't end up very often in specific goals within the priority areas. So that's an area you may want to make some refinements. And in addition, we have been trying to get to cannabis regulations, and we're scheduled to start before the pandemic hit. We haven't been, not been able to do that, given all of the additional tasks that the city has taken and the councils had to take as a result of the pandemic and other needs. But that's certainly out there as something the council may want to find a way to have us focus on. What would probably need to be involved would be pushing something else out into the future if we're going to take this on at this point. But in addition, the council may have totally, totally other refinements or changes you'd like to make in any of the six areas. Next slide, please. So once you've thought through any refinements or enhancements you'd like to make, our recommendation for you tonight is that you confirm the results of the vision and goal-setting session and direct staff to use these as the basis for the budget development process. Next slide, please. Mr. Mayor, open for questions and direction.
Thank you very much. Before we get on with the rest of the discussion on this issue, I want to say that the visioning and goal-setting session this year was remarkably successful. We do these every couple of years. Obviously, in the past, they've been in public, people physically in the room. And the question in my mind was, how are we going to do this remotely and still get input from the community and still get the flavor of preferences for what's going to be happening in the future? And I have to say that I was pleasantly surprised. Our consultant and our staff did a great job of coordinating information and putting together a Zoom presentation, which allowed over four dozen people to participate in this process, which I think is as much or more than we've had physically in the room in the past, in breakout rooms, in discussions, online poll questions, really involving people in this, in this discussion of visioning and goal-setting. And I think we got some very good response. We got some very good feedback on that. And we all appreciate that effort. I think it was great for the community. As we go forward tonight, I think all of our council members are probably pretty clear on the information that's been presented to us, and we probably all have suggestions on how it can be tweaked. So probably not a lot of questions to be asked before we go to public comment. So we'll go quickly down the list here, see if we do have any questions regarding the process, and then we'll go, we'll go to public comment and come back with our revisions and suggestions. So with questions, Mr. Hammond?
No major questions. There's maybe a, you know, comment that, you know, we had down there where we would get additional liaison with the school district. And indeed, that, you know, with what's going on with Georgia Brown right now, that might be a priority, or at least some sort of a point where we can develop a more enhanced connection with that board. Because again, it ties in with Blight and other things that's going to possibly happen to that part of the city. And that's why I'm kind of concerned about their decision at this point. But again, they are autonomous to us. And, yeah, so not a lot we can do, but we did have it down as a goal, as a discussion point with our goal set is to become more connected with the board of school district. So anyway, that, that's really the, just an observation. But other than that, everything looks still pretty good. I'd like to see, once this gets refined, that we get this PowerPoint presentation sent to us, because, you know, as councilpeople, we obviously need to make presentations like this ourselves to the public. So once we get it finished, that would be good to have, Tom, if you would. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Strong?
Yes. I don't have any, any real specific questions. I'm a little concerned on just how much refine those two areas that were mentioned. I think general principles might be better right now, because I don't have a real good crystal ball. Looking forward to see what's the best way to do these things necessarily. And I think circumstances and specifics might enter into those decisions. So I'd tread a little bit softly on getting too specific in goals and priorities.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, sir. I was also, Mr. Hammond, gonna speak about the school liaison. I think that did come up on the goal-setting as well. I think it was the mayor and Mr. Strong that also talked about city government and the high school and situations like that. So I also agree, we should add that somewhere in there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, I'll chime in on that one as well. We actually, Steve, Steve and myself are on an ad hoc interface with the school district. However, we've not been invited to a meeting because of COVID, for whatever reason, for probably two years now. I'm not sure how long it's been. But we were actively meeting with the school district and it's, and it's board, or it's board representatives and superintendent. And I don't know what's happened to that, but this is one of those key matters with Georgia Brown that I think bears a lot of attention from, from our entire city because of the potential disastrous results of that Georgia Brown being closed. So I would just recommend we do that. And then those two final items at the end of the list, for cannabis and diversity, I think we have to review all the six points again, or six slides again, to look at that. But maybe we could have staff figure out how to put them in the right category and see if it works. Good for me. Thanks.
Thank you. We're going to go to public comment now. I have one person waiting in queue, Mr. Dale Guston. Dale, are you with us?
This is Dale Guston, 945 Spring Street. And I agree with attachment one. I think they've done an excellent job. I have a couple of concerns about when you come to funding, because, for instance, the, I think that we've wasted too much money on things that don't fulfill all of this. And actually, Fred Strong, you're going to be interested to know, I'm now on the advisory committee for Slocog. And I think it's that realignment of Vine Street is a project that we should have sought funding from Slocog for, instead of the city being out a million dollars to help a developer. Because it is a city street that connects to 46. And then on, also, on the, I, I think we've wasted money on the parking, but I'll pick that up tomorrow morning, but I'm going to have trouble doing that, because while there's a phone number to call in on, I, I don't have any way to see, I don't know how anybody else on the committee is going to see Julie Dixon's presentation. There's no Zoom, there's no YouTube. How are we going to know what she's presenting? I, he can have a phone number. That doesn't tell us what to, I mean, tonight, we had an excellent YouTube presentation on everything. And, and so I could follow you along excellently, or most excellently, excuse me. And the, anyway, I'll add my comments tomorrow morning, but it's going to be difficult without seeing Ms. Dixon's presentation on a screen.
Thank you. I have no one else waiting in the queue. I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Once again, the question about the parking presentation, is there any allowance been made for people to actually see Julie's presentation, assuming to have a visual presentation?
Yes, sir. If Mr. Guston calls in or emails, we can get him an invite into the meeting.
Okay, so he will be able to see the presentation if he contacts you?
If he logs into the meeting through the application, yes.
Very good. Thank you for that. So Dale, if you're still listening, make contact. You'll get a link to the meeting. You'll be able to see all the material. Okay, so we're going to bring it back to the council for comment. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Strong?
Dale commented on something else, and I'd like to answer that, if you may, if I may. And that is the money from Slocog for Vine Street. And perhaps what he doesn't know, because he's so new on the, on that committee, is that we did go to Slocog for Vine Street, because it was part of the solution to the 101-46 West Vine Street conflicts. And Slocog did fund much of the total project, which includes two roundabouts down near Highway 101. It included the realignment of, of Theater Drive. And we got a lot of money for a lot of this. And we, and there were, the realignment of Vine Street through the new properties that are being developed was also done with developer agreements. Our portion of the total funding was the Vine Street Bridge. So it's not that we didn't go to them. We did. And this was our chunk of, of the many millions that are involved in the whole project. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that information. So getting back to the goal-setting and visioning, I'm sure we all have some tweaks and comments. I'd like to start with the very end, and that are the two points that were brought up regarding cannabis and diversity. Diversity, actually, as the council member, is kind of the watchword of the day. Didn't remember what, didn't seem to matter what vision we were talking about, which one of those six categories, people wanted diversity in most of the categories. But regarding diversity in cultural issues and other things, I think that that's going to work to our benefit if we start talking about a shared resource with the school district. And let me explain, I've had several conversations with the superintendent, Mr. DeBose, about having a shared effort for diversity considerations, much along the lines of what we have now with campus officers. But we could actually expand that service with the help of the school district and use that as a diversity resource for the community, because so many of these issues overlap from the municipal into the school district. In fact, Mr. DeBose even offered the proposal that we might approach the school district about using some additional office space they have and, and setting up a headquarters for diversity issues there. I think that could be discussed as part of a revitalized liaison committee. It has not been active during the COVID crisis. And they, and the school district has also had some pretty weighty issues of its own that have taken up its time. But moving forward, I think we need to revitalize that liaison committee and then bring this up as one of the issues that the city and the schools can work on together. On the cannabis issue, we had talked previously about a citizens committee to gauge the community's temperature regarding the development of the cannabis business in the city of Paso Robles. I had always in my mind that put that under the economic development goal that was part of our visioning process. So going forward, I would say, as we, as we move forward on that issue, that that would be, that would be its home under economic development. Those are my thoughts on the, on the slides that were presented to us. I do agree that we need to be supplied those slides so we can use them for our presentations, but also they should be posted, if not, if they haven't been already on the city website, so everyone can see the conversation the community had regarding those issues. Going to start at the top of the list again with tweaks and comments. Mr. Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, as far as the word diversity, I, I equate that again to variety. And, you know, everybody has a unique range of contributions that make our city what it is. And, you know, being totally objective on things, you know, I don't really want to put a label on them. I just, I really enjoy the fact that we have a variety of all things. And, you know, to try to make it a center point goal to be diversified, it bothers me a little bit sometimes, because I just, to me, we already are there. I see a wide range of it already. I don't like labeling it as, you know, some other areas have been done. But I, you know, kind of celebrate the fact that we are so much varied in what we think and what we do and how we make a city. So, you know, as far as being a goal, to be diversified, I don't really follow that, that line too much. I'd be willing to listen to others, but to have it on a physical line of goals there, I'm not so sure. Cannabis, I'm not, I'm, I'm still strong on that. I don't feel like that is part of Paso or should be, ever be part of Paso. People who want to enjoy cannabis that can go other places. We already have medical marijuana. To be a goal on our setting to, to become a cannabis city is not in my vision, and I think in many of my constituents as well. But, you know, for those two, you know, for a point of discussion to start out with, I would not think we need to add it to any, any line at this point in our picture that we see here on, on the screen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Strong?
Well, I'm going to somewhat agree with both of you, in that I, I think, I think diversity was created by our creator, and it's wonderful. We've got fantastic diversity throughout the whole human race. I think the important thing is not to let that diversity get in the way of other decisions. And to make sure that everything else is, is a matter of equality and justice. I don't think we have to flesh that out any further than that, because we're, we're going to box ourselves into, into a to box ourselves into, into a, into a corner. As far as the cannabis is concerned, I expect that to come back to us as an economic issue and as a funding issue for the city. And the voters have already spoken on the issue. I may have my own moral convictions regarding that. And, but I don't think I should be in a position to impose my moral convictions on anyone else's free choice. So I'm willing to open that back up, but I sure as heck don't want to put it into our goals and priorities at this point in time. Just keep it on the shelf and bring it back as, as we have had requests to do so. And I'm willing to honor those requests and take a look at how can we do something that is fair and equitable and still protects the public health? And I think, other than that, I think the outline that we had today is great. We should just go for it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Garcia, oh, Mr. Garcia, Ms. Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. I hear what Mr. Hammond is saying about the, the actual word of diversity. And when you look up the meaning, it does say that it's a variety. I know that that word can be translated in so many different ways. And how the committee, the community was speaking was different, they had different opinions of it. So, you know, we kind of have to find out what exactly they were talking about. That could be a different meaning for different people in the community. And then the cannabis, yeah, I believe it shouldn't be one of our goals, but I know that it is something that we have to talk about as far as a policy or governance in our, in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will reiterate again that I think that the list that we've been given is very good, very inclusive, and very representative of the conversations that took place during our visioning and goal setting. I think we have strong consensus on the council regarding that. On the issues of diversity and cannabis, I'm hearing that they, the council does not wish to make them explicit goals, but in, in the case of cannabis, certainly open to a public discussion and input in the future. We seek guidance from our constituents on how they want to have that affect our community. And also revitalizing the liaison with the school district will help us address some of the issues that we've, we've discussed here tonight. So if, if, if there is.
May I make a comment, Mr. Martin?
Please, Mr. Gregory.
So, sorry, I just wanted to chime in on the comment real quick. I just want to agree on the, on the cannabis. I think it's something we agreed to look at, not as a goal for the community. So I think that's, that's important not to have in the goals. And then on the, on diversity, I think the governance and community partnerships and strengthening and reestablishing liaison for the school district covers that fairly well. And I think that's the place, if you're going to change anything around, but proactively engage all segments of our community is very clear. And then having the additional engagement with the school district and, and being proactive, I think is clear enough. But anyway, it's my two cents worth.
Very good. So if there are no further comments, I've entertained a motion to confirm the results of our visioning and goal setting session and have those, have those comments tempered by the council comments tonight.
So moved, Mr. Premier?
I have a motion by Councilman Gregory. I believe the second was by Councilman Hammond?
No.
No. I think I was the motion, Councilman Strong made the motion.
Who was the second?
Gregory was the motion, second. It's okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm just having difficulty recognizing the voice. So I'm going to call Mr. Strong as the maker of the motion, Mr. Gregory as the second. And if there's no further discussion on that motion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Bringing us now to item number seventeen, council business and committee reports. Mr. Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only main meeting I had was the Nasi Project, you know, the water commission that we have. Basically, things are moving along with the water. We have water flowing again. The repair has been made as of March nineteenth, it's going to be back on. And we should start having deliverable water to our city through the Nasi Project. No other further concerns there. They are working on the agreement still with Monterey County with regard to the 1954 agreement that was made. We're doing some adjustments to, to work out the language of how water can be used within this county of San Luis Obispo. So that progress is being made, and we'll be able to report out further, hopefully in the next meeting. Other than that, I didn't have any other committee meetings that I did. Again, I do want to say that we do have that parking commission meeting tomorrow on the liaison on that. I'll be chiming in and, and reporting it out. And then, again, on the Georgia Brown closure, I am a little concerned about what I'm hearing and seeing. You know, in that part of the town, it could be devastating if we don't keep a school like that in order and in, in a functional mode. I, I just don't understand sometimes their board with regard to the fact that they had declined enrollment. We have a charter academy that wants to come back to Paso Robles, could have been, certainly been put into that facility and maybe not even had to move or build their, their new project out there on Niblick. Again, these are all things that politically, you know, that the school board has on their mind and what they're doing with the, the children. But again, if there's a statement that our council can make with regard to them, that we are concerned with their prospects, you know, for Brown, I'm not sure that we can actually do that, whatever. But the point is, maybe individually, we can express our concerns directly to maybe their superintendent and maybe to the board directly. So that would, I'd be something I might encourage, and as well, everybody else in, in town, especially on the west side, that has brought this to my attention, that, you know, this is a, moving forward to close that school. So I think, again, there's times when we need to stand up and say something, and I think this might be one of them as far as a council. Maybe we can agendize it for another meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Strong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I've been reviewing communications on funding opportunities and passing information on to the appropriate departments and agencies that could benefit. And while there have been many special city council meetings that I've attended, there have also been regional meetings, including those to train my new alternates at the national level for our region of California. Tonight, we've more or less approved some goals and priorities, and I'm moving on those already in the area of infrastructure. So the most important meetings I've, I've have, have been with the leadership of the National League of Cities Transportation Policy Committee. The follow-up to those meetings is a briefing I've submitted for United States Secretary of Transportation Pete Bootigig prior to my scheduled meeting with him at 11:00 AM next Sunday. That briefing outlined the five greatest needs of Paso Robles in transportation infrastructure funding that aren't already funded. The amount of grants I've asked for range between 55 million and $72 million for desperately needed bridges and improvements to two of our major arterials, those being Creston and Niblick Roads. In all reality, I only expect to get serious consideration on $30 million of those items due to the competition from many other cities throughout this great nation. I would be very pleased if we get any more than that, but have significant hopes on that much. I'll be very busy next week between national meetings and local ones for whom I'm the council liaison. During the NLC Summit Conference, I'll be hearing, in addition to Secretary Bootigig, from Dr. Anthony Fauci, Gina McCarthy of the White House staff, Speaker of the House, Nancy Pelosi, Senator Chuck Schumer, and United States Secretary of the Treasury Janet Yellen, among others. If and when I need additional help from any of you, I'll let you know as soon as possible once I know a schedule. I will gratefully accept any assistance you're able to provide in getting those grants. Thank you very much. That's my part before.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I did not have any specific meetings, but I did get invited to go and do a tour at the Oaks at Paso Robles. It's the assisted living facility next to the Kennedy Club. It was, Mr. Bill Pluma was there and other residents, and senior center volunteers were there, and we got to chat and do a tour of the facility. It's very beautiful. They're also going to be offering other, other areas of that facility open to the public for, for gatherings. So that was, that was nice to get to see that. I have, just to kind of add to COVID-19, I have been getting trained to, to actually do the immunizations at Walmart. We will, we're getting ready so that we can actually give the COVID shots at Walmart. And we're thinking about using the garden center as a clinic because it has an outdoor door that goes right into it. And so I'll keep you updated, but it looks like we're getting all our supplies in, and we're getting trained. We had to go to CPR training, immunization training. And so we're getting ready, and hopefully we're projecting to do anywhere from three to 400 vaccines a week. So we'll keep you updated and how we can help to vaccinate more members of our community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Martin. So I too attended the goal sending, the goal setting meeting with the public, and I thought it was very well done. And I wanted to thank the public for joining us in that effort. I also like to thank our partners over there with Travel Paso and Wine Alliance in their presentation today and congratulate them and thank them for everything that they do for our community and bringing people to our downtown businesses. And I'm going to also share the thoughts that Councilman Hammond shared on Georgia Brown School. It's a, that, the school is not only a cultural center, but it's an economic center for that part of our community. There are the people, the, the folks that live there have the least ability to get around our city, get to school. They cannot afford busing. It's a very, very difficult situation. And I agree with Councilman Hammond. Everybody needs to stand up and say something. It would be a terrible, devastating loss to the west side and a very difficult situation for everybody who lives and depends on that school for having their kids attend. And there's so many people that live close to that school and utilize it. It would be a disaster, in my opinion, to have that school close. So I'd implore the, implore the public to please reach out and make their comments on that and try to talk the school board into changing their mind. And then I'd also like to congratulate on our community to getting back into the red tier and getting our businesses open. We're continuing to keep our businesses moving and thank the Paul and Tom and our staff for helping our businesses succeed, getting all these programs going. And let's keep supporting our downtown. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to echo the concerns expressed by the council members regarding the school's plans. I would ask, based on the number of concerns that the council has expressed in this portion of the meeting, if staff could possibly draft a letter of concern that I could sign as the mayor, we could transmit that to the school district and then need be bring it back as a, as a council item. Again, the school district is not under our jurisdiction, and the best we can do is maintain our conversation with them and express through us constituents' concerns regarding any decisions they might make. My schedule for the last couple of weeks have included a meeting with elected officials online regarding the COVID-19 situation. We are happy to report we're moving back into the red tier, which is better than the purple tier. We want to keep going in the right direction. That means we have to maintain the stats and improve them in the future. That it means continued hand washing, continued masking, and continued social distancing. It means getting tested, which you can do for free. And if you need more information about that, you can go to the city's website or to recovers slo.org to find out how that can be accomplished. We have to maintain and improve our COVID-19 statistics to remain in the red tier, then move on beyond that and continue reopening our businesses and our community. It's everyone's assignment to make that happen. We have to make that happen. I met via Zoom with an official from the city of Fulton regarding their Fulton Fiber Project as they endeavor to bring fiber optic to their community. Very interesting discussion, I'll be passing along that information to our city staff as we approach our own fiber optic challenges here in Paso Robles. Attended the monthly mayor's meeting via Zoom with the other mayors in our community. Also attended a couple of Channel Counties Division meetings, Channel Counties Division of California Cities, the exec board of which I'm a member. I attended that meeting. And also we had a full meeting of all the cities in the Channel Counties Division. There are 25 cities spanning the distance between Paso Robles and Port Huiney. Eighteen of those cities are represented, and we had a very productive meeting. We're getting some very good speakers for our, for our cities from the state level and getting good information to our cities and lining out ways that our cities can become involved in affecting decisions at the state level. I attended the Economic Vitality Corporation Board of Directors meeting. Will probably be my last meeting as that organization has voted to dissolve, basically merging with the REACH Committee, which is a regional economic development organization that's been in the works for the last couple of years. Spoke with representative from Slocog regarding input on needs for transportation here in our community. I was on sound off on KPRL today, had the opportunity to talk a lot about the proposed sewer rate increases, answered one call on that subject. And then I was notified at noon today that our governor, Mr. Newsom, would be touring the vaccination site at Questa College near San Luis Obispo. And so I shuttled over there in my little Mitsubishi and joined Mayor Harmon from the city of San Luis Obispo as two mayors representing our area, along with other electeds, to greet the, greet the governor and give him some information about local efforts on COVID-19 and take a tour of the vaccination pod at Questa College. Is there anything else for the council to discuss this evening, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Upcoming events, Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, Monday, March the eighth, 1:30 PM. Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, March the ninth, 6:30 PM. Library Board meeting Thursday, March eleventh, 9:00 AM. City Council regular meeting Tuesday, March the sixteenth, 6:30 PM. The deadline for submitting items for the regular meeting on Tuesday, March sixteenth, is Wednesday, March the third. If there's no further business, I would entertain a motion to it here.
So moved.
Second?
Motion and second, Mr. Hammond, I believe, and Mr. Strong?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? In that case, we are adjourned. And once again, thank you, everyone, council and staff and the community for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
Thank you, and good night.